Agenda, this is number six. This day is Thursday, September nineteen twenty twenty four. It's five oh two P M. here in the Nat U Hill Room. I want to welcome all who either are here with us or will watch this later and it's recording. Want to note that here in the Nat U Hill Room, we have Counselor Iverson, Counselor Wiltz, Counselor Crossley. We've got Counselor Munson, Counselor McKim. I am Trent Deckard. And one and over the record that Counselor Hawk is not here, but I believe we expect her. All right, let's move to number two on our agenda, adoption of agenda. Does any council member wish to add or remove an item from tonight's budget work session agenda? Quiet as mice. Meet it out. All right, well, if there are none, I'll take a voice vote to drop the agenda as so indicated. So with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's unanimously adopted. Let's move to item three, and this is me reading a lot of things that will mean more to the public watching and less to the folks in the room. But maybe a good reminder. I want to welcome everyone to the twenty twenty five Budget Review Work Session. I want to remind council members and the public that during these sessions, this is our sixth session, final session, will review and discuss departmental budgets that are presented. This is not, let me repeat, this is not the final approval of the twenty twenty five Monroe County Annual Budget, nor is it the formal budget hearing. The public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, October eighth at five P M. And the budget final adoption will occur on Monday, October twenty eighth at five P M. The public can make comments regarding a budget during those meetings. As we begin, a department will be invited to join us to present their budget and say words they believe are appropriate. As a reminder, departments have been allotted an amount of time for their budget review. This is based on times from previous years. As always, the council may extend that time as needed. However, we need to be mindful of the time and keep our discussion focused on the budget requests presented. And I'm very proud to say that we have tried to do that pretty well, but I believe every counselor to some extent has been an offender on that. So we're all guilty together. If a non-budget topic requires further dialogue, I can always ask council staff members to reach out to department heads to schedule a discussion at the next available council meeting. During a department's review, they may be asked to explain any increases, decreases, or additions to their twenty twenty five budget. Council members will then be given the opportunity to ask questions. Any council member can make recommendations to increase or decrease account lines based on the discussion and or need of the department. Council then will vote to approve moving forward with the department's reviewed budget request. You'll hear a vote, maybe counselors vote for it, maybe they don't, but that does not indicate final approval. Again, that will occur later on October eighth after our public hearing. And with that, I think that reading is probably every council member could do that from memory. But I wanted to make sure we're okay at this point. I also want to know for the record, Counselor Hawk is with us now. Counselor McKim.
I was told by a member of the public that the audio was really difficult to to hear on Zoom or on Teams. So I don't know if there are any issues, if that's being monitored from the booth.
Just tonight specifically.
Generally. I've noticed that in recordings of videos, when someone's speaking, the microphone will cut out and come back in, cut out, come back in. So those are minor issues. I think you can get the gist of it, but you know, in case.
Yeah. If we can kind of monitor that T S D and certainly members of the public, if you are having trouble hearing us, certainly let us know and we will work to address that. Council members, I'm going to remind you of this. Try to get that mic and bring that as close to your mouth as possible. Just know it will keep pick up your incidental whispers and or exclamations or thoughts. But I think it's important the public hears on all these issues. Okay, all right. At this point, I'd like to give Michelle and the auditor, of course, an opportunity to briefly update us on any changes made at previous reviews and update us regarding changes made to the draft four B.
Good evening, council. I wanted to update you with regards to the additional appropriations for general fund. There was a question at Tuesday's meeting regarding the public defenders additional appropriation request. And both Bree and I went back and reviewed our paperwork that was turned in. And that was not part of that report. Apparently, that additional appropriation request came after they had already submitted the paperwork. And I think that issue arose, you know, after after all of that. So that has been included in this amount here on line thirteen or line six. So that does reflect that additional appropriation in the general in the general fund. And that's the only change we made. There was no changes from last week's Thursday meeting.
Reminds me I need to open our Teams link just generally. All right, counselors, any comments or questions there? Counselor Iverson.
I will just note, for those of you who have been watching all six meetings, you'll note that the the numbers have been changing. And as we make work here, you'll see that that particularly in the general fund, that that's increasingly looking healthier and healthier. So we got more work to do, though.
We're always messing with the mud ball to get this cleaned up and on to the public, then on to the next budgets. Any other comments, Counselor Hawk?
Could you read to us that bottom line? That would I because I can't see it from here.
I cannot myself, and I'm not going to pull.
And the general fund?
Yes.
Two hundred thirty eight minus two hundred thirty eight thousand four hundred fifty seven dollars.
Four hundred fifty six.
Red, it's the. Well, it's in red, sorry. It's it's I'm sorry, it's the purple line.
Purple.
No, it's the I'm sorry, it's the white line above the purple line.
You're not doing it.
Oh, okay, I can't even see that.
There, she zoomed it in.
That's better. Okay, two hundred thirty eight. Okay, but it's.
Quite a bit different from when we started.
Yes, significantly.
Yes.
And the the bottom line for the total frozen levy is is also much improved.
Actually, kind of amazed.
Yeah.
That we did that.
It's a process. All right, any other comments or questions? Counselor Wiltz, do you have something?
No.
Just thinking it through.
Yeah, thanks.
Right. All right, we're figuring it out as we go. And by the way, we do this in public. This is right here in public. That's what you're watching, all this happening. All right, so if there's nothing else, I don't want to take up any more time. We'll get to what we need to do tonight. We will next move over to department updates. You're seeing that a little bit differently, and the reason being is the treasurer did not get an opportunity to be with us on her budget night due to illness, and we wanted to invite her back to offer some words today. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Voice is still a little yucky, although I'm way better. I've been sick a long time. Came back from vacation and all my department pretty much have been out with COVID and hit the auditor's office real heavy. So we've really had a tough time right here at budgets. I want to address you on two things. One, interest rates, and two, I want to use my experience a little bit to tell you what I think is 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 a good way to head for the county that I think and hope that you will consider my long term here and the in the important jobs that I've had and what I've seen. So first, I want to talk about interest rates. What we commonly call the Fed is basically the Federal Reserve Board of Governors, of course. They meet to talk about interest rates in these meetings called Federal Open Market Committee Meetings, which include the Federal Reserve members and four other Reserve Bank Presidents and the bank of the and the Federal Reserve President of the Bank of New York. The other ones rotate. So this group looks at the economic climate of the United States and tries to steer us into a real safe and prudent path. Currently, this group is looking to right-size the U S inflation to around two percent. It's not been able to do that. It's getting closer, it's getting better because we went had some pretty significant inflation. But they attempt to do this by making policy changes and working with important people in the in the banking industry to to adjust things to to make really that happen, make it the best climate that we can have economically. So when this Federal Open Market Committee meets with these twelve members, the seven members of the Federal Reserve and the other bank presidents, they meet to decide what is best for the for the for everyone involved. Everyone from the person trying to buy a new car, to try to get a house, to try to 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 finance a multimillion dollar manufacturing facility. So we're all in the same, it's the same market. So basically, what they do is they look at the risks and they look at the climate and they see what needs to adjust for their little their little different measurements, and they set a borrowing rate to either make it to make it go up or make it go down or adjust these factors. But anyway, all for about basically consumer protection and community development. And so what they do is they meet about once a month, and they don't always meet, they meet at least ten times a year. But they've been holding the the interest rate steady now for many, many months. And as I told you last time I talked to you, I expected them to drop the interest rate. They didn't do it, didn't do it. Chairman Jerome Powell said last time they met last month that they would definitely do it this time. And the six other voting members of the Federal Reserve Board of Governors, when they had this meeting, they did vote to to reduce it yesterday by fifty basis points, one half of one percent. First time this year, of course. The only dissenting vote was Michelle Bowman, who was in favor of only decreasing at a quarter of a percent. So what does that tell us for how we move forward in this budget year? It tells us that inflation is still an important factor. And it's more of an important factor in growing communities. When you have a community that is shrinking, you actually tend to see cost shrinking. But in Monroe County, we're attracting retirees. We're not just attracting college students. We're attracting lots of new people to move into Monroe County. So what do they bring with them? Well, they bring their income with them, which goes back to the county and the city and the other taxing units in the form of local option income tax. And so that helps us in more ways than just the taxes that we receive through property taxes, which are usually capped at a four percent increase somewhat by the state Department of Local Government Finance. So we pretty much always have that buffer of growth. But then what blesses our county is we're having all this new construction and all these new people moving in. It's almost become like a Mecca in Indiana to move to Monroe County. If you can afford it, now a lot of people say you can't afford it, but the people who are making the money and paying loads of this of this tax, this local income tax, they they can afford to live here and they're bringing their monies with them. So where are we going to grow next year? Okay, we know we're going to grow four percent or around four percent in in property taxes. And no matter what the assessed value does, it's four percent of last year, pretty much, right? So we can't always look at assessed value, we really have to look at the growth quotient. And that's a that's an average of the last ten years. But where we're blessed is we're attracting people who make more money and they can pay more of these taxes. So how does that help you as a as a county council? And after, you know, twelve years in the auditor's office and eight years prior as as treasurer, you know, I've been doing this a long time. I've seen a lot of things move all different directions. In addition, when I went to grad school in business, I went in the Carolinas, which is the banking center, I went to Wake Forest. So I know a lot about banking, I know a lot about investing, and and I don't like to lose my own money, and I certainly want to lose a penny of yours. I see, moving forward, I see we're not going to trend up in interest rates. We're going to trend down a tiny bit, but remain flat. We're going to, we're not going to really take these big hits because we we're not shrinking that inflation to two percent like the Fed wants. And the reason why is people went without buying stuff for a while. And now that they have these better incomes, people are just buying a lot of stuff. And that means Christmas is going to be good and 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 as as the interest rates do drop a small amount, these people have been sitting here waiting for these interest rates to go down, they're going to be jumping on new house sales. So new house sales will pop up again. So that's good for our county, right? That's good growth. I say all that because when I was doing my when I was doing my budget, I understand that that you you want to try to map raises and correlate with inflation, which makes perfect sense. I mean, that's the whole idea, right? And that's why we work so hard to right-size all these studies that we did and get the get the raises and get these these salaries correct so that people could afford to live here and and stay with Monroe County. So we'd have institutional knowledge, we'd have great people for the future. I'm afraid if we move forward and we move away from that wonderful work that you guys have already done this last couple of years, which which, by the way, really impresses me, and I'm very proud of every one of you. I'm afraid with the people in my department who who are who are higher level, you know, cats, if they get a different raise than the people who are not who are common, I'm afraid it's going to once again build ill will amongst the ranks. So I implore you from the bottom of my heart, with my twenty years of experience running, you know, the finances in this county, to really consider a four percent across the board raise for everyone so that no one gets more and no one gets less. We've I feel like in the last nine months, six to nine months, I've seen a renaissance of people loving to work for the county again, people being proud to be here, people feeling like you really had their back and you really want them to live inside city county limits. And that makes me feel good, you know, because I want to live here. I'm trying to sell stuff in Indianapolis, so I don't can not have a tie to them anymore. I love that. I moved here in ninety eight to move to this county, and I love this county. And I know it's hard if you're looking for a new house to find or to find one that's affordable here. However, if we drop salaries or we raise them inconsistently, I'm afraid it's going to continue the trend that we did have of people leaving for better jobs instead of enjoying the benefits of Monroe County government. So again, my ask is 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 two things. One, that you not don't get too worried about the interest rates because, you know, we had several ones that dropped off at lower rates, way below what the Fed's offering now. And so you don't really worry about losing money that way. And that you consider the same raise for every single person under the Monroe County government umbrella. And I thank you very much for letting me come back and and talk to you at a later date. It means a lot to me. Questions?
Thank you very much, Catherine. Okay. All right. Well, with all that in mind, we will move on to this budget. We do want to know item six is a is a repeat back. Most council members are familiar with this, but let me just read some language here to explain this for anyone wondering at home. On Tuesday, September seventeenth, this council approved the advertisement of a correctional center lit at the rate of point one seven five percent. Upon further review since that meeting, it was determined that a new rate needs to be identified by this council. I'd like to, I'd like Molly Turner King to kind of give us an update why that is and why identifying a new rate is necessary and what actions council needs to take to remedy the situation. And so by virtue of that, I would like unanimous consent to open for discussion the approval of ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty three and ordinance modifying local income tax. Any objections? All right, we're we're open. Ms. Turner King, can you kind of pick up from there and explain for folks who watched this be well-narrated? Why we're talking about this briefly briefly during this budget hearing?
Yes, so after Tuesday's meeting, I started to prepare the ordinance for advertisement, and I was preparing a point one seven five rate. Upon reviewing the statute and conferring with D L G F, the Department of Labor Government Finance, it was decided that the rate needs to be in an increment of one one hundredth. So the rate either could be point one seven or point one eight, but it cannot be point one seven five. And so what I have done is I've prepared two ordinances, one for a point one seven and a one for a point one eight rate. And whatever rate council approves me to advertise, I will advertise tomorrow. And then it should not impact our timeline at all. Our public hearing should still be held on the seventh as we originally planned.
All right. So pretty clear there, what we've done is we had an idea and the legislature said your idea needs to be more like this or this. All right, council discussion, Counselor Munson?
I'm happy to offer a modified resolution or amendment. Is this an amendment, Ms. Turner King?
A new one.
It would be a motion to authorize the advertisement of a new rate, so it's not really an amendment.
Okay. So. I move that we offer a new rate and that rate be zero point one seven, staying within the required one hundredths.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, we'll go to discussion upon that amendment. And I want to note a pointed clarification. Counselor Munson, do you mean that rate to also include the special lit changes that were in the original resolution?
Which is exactly like our original resolution, except for the the thousandth issue.
And if it helps, my plan is to take the exact same resolution that was previously published as a point two rate, take the point two language out and insert point one seven. So the special purpose tax will still be adjusted accordingly.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, council discussion, Counselor Hawk?
Yes, really having enough time to give some thought as to what we were doing when the vote was taken taken the other day. I walked into the room thinking I was not going to support the jail tax because I felt like we could do the jail with the edit tax. And yet I wanted to be a part of supporting others. But this has given me a pause here because I heard from the county commissioners, they plan to move forward with a location that I can't support. And that also included that we would have to move forward with moving the courts at the same time. So I'm I'm just not going to support any increase in in the jail tax at this time. I know that it's not going to make a bit of difference to anyone else, but to me. So that's I I'm going to do what I walked into the meeting the other day to do, which was not support the jail tax.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Iverson?
Yeah, I am going to be very happy to support this. I think this achieves the two goals that I had articulated the other night, where it's revenue sufficient for us to meet our programming goals and it moves us forward within the timeline that we had advertised.
Other council comments? All right. And so I think without much fanfare here, we can dispatch with this. Do we need to formalize that vote?
Yes, please.
All right, can I do a voice vote? No roll call? All right.
Roll call.
We'll go to a roll call on that vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yeah.
A plat book, no.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
We will just to double the record because I know this is important. Counselor Hawk was no on that, remaining were yes. And I want to make sure that those votes are always clear for the public record for those who really want to be clear on that.
I wanted to be on the record that I am not against the jail project. I'm against raising of jail tax to cover it because we do have the edit tax that could cover it.
All right. So now we will move past item six and return to regular budget items that we had. And that is number item seven is the auditor's office.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund one thousand dash zero 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 two. General Fund Auditor with a category request of personnel, one million, two hundred forty three thousand, five hundred eighteen dollars. Supplies, one hundred thirty one thousand dollars cap, I'm sorry, services, zero capital zero for a total budget of one million, three hundred seventy four thousand, five hundred eighteen dollars.
Second.
All right, with that, we will welcome our auditor, Bree Gregory, to take take him from there.
Great, thank you very much, council. Just want to start by thanking you for being here, which is I think is our ninth meeting in the past three weeks. So thanks for hanging in there. Mine is going to be short and sweet, I believe I do have a few changes. There's due to a thirty five to forty hour increase, there's a slight increase to the internal auditor salary. Another change, I have moved the G I S representative into the general fund because it's not sustainable where it was previously in my plat book fund. And then finally, we've also increased our postage line because we are not requiring departments to submit postage with their claims any longer. So we anticipate that cost going up. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we'll go to questions from council. I'm looking around for anyone. I know folks are taking a look at this. Yes, Counselor Wiltz?
Yeah, I just want to hear a little bit more about the G I S representative. You said that so fifty percent was in, it says one one eight one, which fund is that?
That's the plat book fund.
Plat book, but it's not sustainable there.
There's a current cash balance in the plaque book fund of forty eight thousand, three hundred and thirty five dollars.
What else comes out of the plat book fund?
Um, not a lot. The revenue comes from property transfers. It's a dollars per legal description. What I would like to do is build up this fund a little bit because we would like to digitize our property transfer records, which has not yet been done, and it's going to be very costly. So I mean, clearly, I'm nowhere near being able to do that right now with this balance, but ideally, that's what we would use it for.
So no, I'm sorry, may I follow up? So no property transfers are digital?
They're in those books that you see in my office, that's where they. That's where they are currently.
Lot of books in your office.
There's a lot of books.
Lot of books, big books.
Big books.
Biggest. Um, okay, all right, so that makes sense. And the other fifty percent of this person, this position is, is it in GIS? Where is it?
It's in auditors ineligible.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Of course, um, I did fail to mention one note. I had increased part time from ten thousand to fifteen thousand. I don't think it's necessary, we can go ahead and bring that back down to ten.
Other comments, questions? Counselor McKim?
Could the entire GIS position fit in ineligible deductions?
Okay, well, I currently have requested in that fund for the twenty twenty five budget, um, two hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and ninety eight worth of expenditures. The cash balance of that fund as of today, you know, noting we're not through the year yet, is three hundred and twenty one thousand, three hundred and seventy one dollars. So this fund receives revenue. It receives the property tax from ineligible deductions and the penalties associated. So because we've been working on finding those with um, a company TMA, where it's, we're going to receive less and less revenue from that. So I mean, you know, the first few years we had that contracts, um, a lot more revenue was coming in, we were finding a lot more, but it's going to be more sporadic at this point. Um, and this was another source of revenue that I could potentially use to help digitize those plat books without dipping into our general fund. So my preference is, although I I could, um, I prefer not, but that is to your discretion, of course.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hawk?
Uh, we might go ahead and and put it in there. And if it runs short, we can always like move it back over into general later. But I think anything we can do to put less pressure on general right now because we still haven't uh, worked any uh, raise in there at all. Yeah. But you know, why don't? And we also have not discussed uh, the memo that was sent to us today by counsel attorney.
Are you talking about the FLSA items and the COLA issues potential? Is there another memo that went out today?
I sent a memo today, I think, about the auditor salary um, and the new supplement, the new legislation that applies to the supplemental, but that's the only one I sent today.
I've not had time to look at that.
Yeah.
But I'm sure we can talk about that eventually.
See them all.
Okay. Counsel, I move that we set line one zero zero four five GIS representative to zero and set line one seven eight zero one part time to ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion upon the amendment? Okay. Any, all right, let's do a voice vote.
On the amendments. I I need to have a moment to refigure the uh, FICA and perf because of those changes.
Do you want us to pause after the vote, or do you want us to continue talking and then you do that?
You can go ahead and do a voice vote to approve the amendment so I can move forward. And then um, give me a moment after that.
Awesome, all right. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, that is carried, we'll pause for just a second while Kim does her thing. Oh, it's good. Oh, good. Counsel Iverson, just let me know, the audio seems better out there in uh, for the attendees online. So thanks for your patience.
I would like to move that we have cookies provided at every meeting going forward. It's been a lovely addition.
Yeah, thanks to our staff for looking out for a lot of random things in this time. Kim's husband is a hero.
He is good.
He he needs a special staff title, don't you think?
Good man. Question real quick for Ms. Turner King and maybe the auditor. On the memo that uh, Counselor Hawk referenced that we received, will we do that in this budget or discuss that in this budget? Or what, you got a recommendation there? Not working. You may have to borrow from a friend. Sorry about that.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So I imagine discussion of that occurring um, when elected official salaries are discussed because that's the time you usually talk about the supplementals.
Thank you, thanks for taking me back through it. Counsel Iverson?
Just a a point of clarity. If you refresh your browser, if you're if you're watching online, uh, the packet is now available on the calendar entry. So it was an older version and now the correct version is on our uh, our calendar entry at co dot Monroe dot in dot U S.
Thank you, and thanks to T S D for all their quick work in the last four hundred meetings.
Okay, counsel, um, I've uh, removed the GIS position, reduced the part time down to ten thousand, fixed the FICA and the perf, and the new bottom line for personnel is one million, two oh one, five thirty five.
But you just reduced it to one thousand.
What?
Just double check here.
Oh, yeah, the math is right, this is just, yeah, sorry. It, the formula is over here in Laos, it's not over here, so that's why we have to go back and forth.
I I figure one thousand might cause a problem.
Yeah, no, it's it's ten, I got it over here on the side. So the new bottom line for personnel is one million, two oh one, five thirty five. And then the entire budget is now one million, three thirty two, five thirty five, right? Okay.
Thank you for reading that into our record. All right. Other comments or discussion on this budget? Any questions? We good, friends? Yes, Counsel will.
Okay. On the auditor's budget in general, like?
Yeah, I think we're not done with this area, so we can go to any general discussion.
Yes.
Okay, I I do have a question.
Yes.
Um, so you mentioned the contract that was has been in place for several years now that's collecting money that's owed to the county. And the fact that it might have some diminishing returns, um, because they captured a lot, and that makes sense. Um, where is that contract funded? And um, how much does it cost versus how much is it now bringing in? I'm kind of looking for the return on investment on that.
Just one, we, okay, so the contractual line in the general fund is for the Hartman and Williams contract for our gap support. So um, the contract you're referring to is in the auditor's ineligible fund, which we haven't gotten to.
I will ask about it again then, if that's okay.
Okay. Yes, Counsel Iverson.
All right, I'll be quick. My question is uh, down on your postage line, three zero eight zero zero. This has come up a couple of times during budget hearings. Uh, my question is, does your office use one of these postage machines where you load money on and it stays on the machine until you use it? Or are you going to the post office or stamps dot com or something?
We do a little bit of both because we do send out um, mailings that, you know, require us to physically go in. It's just a little bit easier, especially for return receipts and so forth. Um, so we do both. Um, for sending out, you know, just typical claims, it goes through the postage machine, so we load it. And we typically, um, I think we needed to load it here again soon, so.
Okay, so do you know the balance on that machine right now?
Sorry, I didn't pull that before coming, but I could get it to you.
I mean, it it looks like you asked for four thousand last year and you expended four thousand. So I I would imagine that it's a pretty low balance.
More than likely, um, I think I think we'll be okay with six. I'd rather come back to you for an additional than request more than is necessary.
Sure.
Counsel Hawk?
I was just going to comment that originally I might have changed was that contract of having to do with ineligible. Um, I forget what the title is, but they were uh, it was just, they would keep a part of what they collected. It didn't really cost, I mean, you know, they they kept a portion of it.
That is correct.
That's, it may not be the same way now, but that's the way it was.
It's the same way.
Okay.
Any other comments or discussions? Okay. I think we can, uh, with the numbers as read by Michelle earlier, thank you very much for doing that real in real time, not easy stuff. Let's go to a uh, roll call vote on this budget.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, let's move to the next item, plat book.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund eleven eighty one dash zero 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 plat book with a category request of personnel, zero supplies, five hundred dollars, services, zero dollars, capital zero dollars for a total budget of five hundred dollars.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, um, as I mentioned before, the revenue um, in this fund comes from property transfers. Um, the auditor's office receives ten dollars per legal description. Um, I also mentioned, I would like to try to build this fund up slightly to assist with the cost to digitize our transfer books, which I'd really like to do in the new near future, I think it's really important. Um, I also mentioned the current cash balance is forty eight thousand, three hundred and thirty five dollars and fifty five cents, so we have some work to do. Um, just to give you an idea, year to date revenue, thirty four thousand, four hundred and twenty, so it it builds very slowly. Um, there's not much going on um, in this fund. Right now, we have a small line for office supplies. Um, and that is all.
Yes, Counsel Hawk?
Right, I um, would not like the auditor to have to be like where she could save a penny here and a penny there to do a project that needs to be done. We need to just add that project in if it's important to have it done and just face it and and move forward. I mean, I appreciate what she's trying to do, but that's um, we need to find out about what it would cost and then let us decide where we want to get the money.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Counselor Hawk. I'm actually, I'm attending soon the AIC conference, the Association of Indiana Conference, or Counties, the annual conference soon. And also, there's an upcoming auditors conference. So I attend to speak with some vendors and get an idea of the cost for this project.
Other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, um, we will go to a roll call on this budget.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, next, we're going to go to, this is the one I struggle to say, auditors ineligible.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund twelve sixteen dash zero 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 zero, auditors ineligible deduction with a category request of personnel, seventy seven thousand, five hundred forty eight dollars, supplies, twenty one thousand dollars, services, one hundred forty two thousand, two hundred fifty dollars, capital zero for a total budget of two hundred forty thousand, seven hundred ninety eight dollars.
Second.
Okay, counselors, um, I uh, already spoke briefly about this fund, the revenue is from um, property tax and associated penalties from erroneous homestead deductions. Um, this um, fund can be used for essentially um, any expenses of the office of the auditor. Um, current unitate revenue, um, thirty two thousand, four hundred and seventy four dollars. So this is another one that is declining in revenue, um, as I noted, um, as far as, you know, revenue coming in, um, it does have a healthy cash balance of three hundred and twenty one thousand, three hundred and seventy one dollars. So noting all that, this is, you know, another source, a potential source of funding that um, project that we've discussed of digitizing the records. So with that, um, you know, there's not a lot going on. I know that you intend to put the entire GIS position in here, so we'll have an adjustment to do there. Other than that, happy to entertain questions.
All right. Yeah, questions? Yeah, Counselor Wiltz?
It's like, do I?
Like?
Um, this contractual is, it says TMA audits, is that the gap? Is that what you're referring to? The the people?
This one.
What audit is this?
So the the audit contract was in the general fund.
Okay.
This is the um, TMA audits, they're the tax management associates, I think is their name. And they do the homestead deduction auditing. So there, they go in, help research that. And then we pay nothing out of pocket unless they find something and they get a percent of those fees, which.
That's okay, so this is that one. And but you have a hundred twenty five thousand budgeted in that.
I do.
And you took, you did, you lowered that by, it looks like a hundred thousand dollars.
We lowered it by a substantial amount because as you can see, um, expanded in twenty twenty three was around eighty three thousand. Um, twenty twenty four even less. We could lower that further. Um, I um, it's just, it's fluctuated quite a bit year to year, so it's just hard to gauge where we're going to be. Um, I would be comfortable going to maybe eighty. I mean, clearly, we're not spending it unless we need to.
Yes, Counsel McKim?
I mean, lowering that doesn't really get us anything.
No.
So.
Yeah.
But I do want to make a motion to increase line one zero zero four five GIS representative to sixty thousand, seventy two dollars along with uh, all the the appropriate uh, self insurance, FICA and perf.
Second.
Got a motion on the table to amend this? Any discussion on the amendment? All right, seeing no discussion on the amendment, we'll go to a voice vote on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, the motion is carried. Michelle, you need some time to adjust that? All right.
This is where Jennifer can play the Jeopardy.
I guess. We need a commercial break, so.
Yeah, we should sell advertising. About advertising on buses right now. Yeah, we should sell advertising to the county council.
That's right, at about like 4% for every employee.
To make a good time to do a commercial.
I think we should have one of those banners that just keeps moving along, you know, the
Like a little ticker.
In, in European soccer games, they have them on the sidelines so that as the players are playing, there's like a dog running in front of them.
Oh, my gosh, that's funny.
On a night like this, a Hekel's hamburger goes a long way and.
That's right.
We could read them, distribute them, pass them on. Okay, we're still recording.
Okay, counsel, since I kind of had an idea what you were doing, I had, was working on some numbers. So we increased the GIS to 60072, increased the FICA to 7044, perf to 8,532 for a grand total for the personnel for 114,000, 148,000, with then a grand total for the budget to 277,398.
All right, that has been read into the record and we will accept that. Any under other questions or discussion items on this budget? We good? All right, here in a moment, we'll go to a roll call. I just want to remind the public, this is not us accepting the budget final, it's us accepting it into our record and we'll move forward. All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Duckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Right. We'll move on, thank you very much, to the auditor.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to number eight, Youth Services Bureau. Want to come on up?
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 1114-0166, lit special purpose YSB with a category request of personnel $2,258,754, supplies $72,300, services $136,800, capital $10,000, for a total budget of $2,487,854.
Second, but what was the capital number again?
10,000.
20.
Okay, on the detail, it's 20,000.
20.
All right.
What, what was the bottom line? The, you had 2,000,000?
200, or 2,2487,854, but.
So the bottom line is correct.
The bottom line is.
It's just the capital is, is 20,000.
Well, welcome all. Thanks for coming in and tell us what you would like to highlight here in this budget.
Well, first, I'm Vicky Tavano, Executive Director. I think you all know Judge Holly Harvey, the Juvenile Judge, and this is Vanessa Schmidt, the Deputy Director. And I would first, before we discuss the budget, let you know that every four years, we're licensed by the Indiana Department of Child Services. We passed our audit two weeks ago with flying colors. So would you keep us open for the next four years? Secondly, we are audited every three years by the federal government because we do receive federal funds. That was an exhausting 10-hour audit, all day for Vanessa and me in a room with the auditor, and we passed again with flying colors. So you've got us for a while if you want to fund us. But our proposal, our budget proposal increased by about $84,000, which is about 3.5% increase, and that is attributed almost entirely to two things. One is a new position that was approved for the Development and Training Manager this year, and the 2% increase, which was recommended by the USDA for food. We do have to feed the children. And as you all know, groceries are going up. So those are the significant changes. And we also transferred $7,500 out of the YSB budget into the Commissioner's budget because they are going to take over taking care of maintenance, all fleet maintenance and repair. And that's great for us. We're happy that we just call them to come fix the cars and buses. So no problem there. Any questions about anything else? That's mostly, we're staying in what we normally spend. We are very fiscally conservative over there, and we'll keep trying to remain that way.
Thank you very much, and congratulations on all that. It's tremendous. And yes, we do want to fund you. Counselor McKim?
Thank you. I just had a question on the data specialist position. The notes in our spreadsheet say staff in position TBD. Is that vacant or do?
Yeah, we just promote, the development and training person, we promoted from within, from the data specialist. We have a conditional offer out right now. And as you know, if you work for us, you have to do an extensive background fingerprinting, background checks, all the things. And those take about two to three weeks. So we don't, we can't be a full offer until that's completed, and we're in the process.
Okay, good. You have pretty good confidence that you'll have.
Uh, yes.
Great. Counselor Hawk?
Yes, whether you noticed or not, but in the bond that the county is doing is, looks like we're going to finally get some generators there. And that should have already happened. I hope that you don't have to wait too long to get those because every day that goes by, and if something would happen that you would lose electricity again, you simply can't have that. You have people that you have to take care of every day, and you have to plan every day as though that place is full. And, and so you don't, you don't ever leave a facility such as that without the means to continue to operate.
Well, we, we are very grateful and looking forward to it. Being in the dark with smelly teenagers who can't shower and freezers that we can't open to get food has been a disaster when it's more than a day or two. So thank you very much for that.
Right, it's unacceptable, totally unacceptable. And it's been a long time now since, I mean, it happened months ago, months ago. And you were without electricity for what, three days? And we had to have somebody running, was it three days?
Five days.
Five days. And you had to have somebody like running some kind of line from one building to the other. I mean, we should have immediately been on all over that to get the money for it. We've got the money. Don't ever be afraid to come to ask for something like that. Because that really should be, if it has to do with money, come ask us.
Okay, thank you. I would want to say one more thing before you consider our budget. We do bring in, last year, we brought in $831,000 to the County General Fund through per diems that we collected. And this year, we expect to exceed that. We've already collected a 600 and plus thousand and project that it will be about almost 900,000 this year. So that is money that offsets our budget that goes into County General that you use for other things.
Thank you very much.
I also wanted to mention that on some of the documents I saw just today, it said the Brinkley House. And for those of us who remember Morris Binkley.
I'm sorry, if there was a misspelling by someone, I remember Morris well. So it is the Binkley House.
Right, I mean, he would be here with the chocolates.
Yes, he would.
He always said, how many dark chocolate for everybody?
Counselor Wiltz?
If I can remember the question that I had, that would be fantastic. Oh, it was about the food. You mentioned the increase for the food, which it looks like the year before you had no increase in, in your food budget, which is surprising to me. So do you wait until there's a specific directive from USDA to you or?
No, we just looked it up this year because we, inflation has been worse than it had been in the past, and we've had way more kids, so they eat more. And I just wanted to be sure that we've had something to reference why we were asking for an increase, and that seemed like the logical place to look.
I would think so. And it looks like you're right on target to spend every little bit that you budgeted last year. So that makes a lot of sense. It's important, too. I would say right behind or next to in front of the generator. Like, obviously, you need funds for food. So a 2% when there hasn't been one in a while does not seem like very much to me. And I would not be afraid to look at that maybe more frequently as you come back.
Okay.
That's my two cents.
Thank you.
Counselor Hawk?
Well, and for those of us who remember having young folks around, it's been a while since that happened at my house. But they're always hungry.
Yes.
And there's always need for a snack.
We are required to feed them three full meals and two snacks a day.
Right.
And we do. And we also have other things, fruit and things for them whenever they're hungry.
And healthy food is so important. I just think that we have for too long relied on processed food. It's just not good for anyone.
All of our menus have to be approved by the state and the portions and the ingredients, down to the minutest detail. So you're welcome to look at our menus anytime. They were approved, by the way, for next year.
All right, other questions, comments? All right, sounds like there are none. So we'll go to a roll call on this budget.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Duckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. I would like to make one more comment if you don't mind. I'm 70 now, so I'm not positive this, I'll be at another budget hearing, not making any announcements yet. But I have, I want to leave expressing on the record my fear that the people that come after some of you and take your place will forget to change the special purpose tax rate back. And YSB is funded, with the exception of our federal grant and a tiny little state grant, with lit special purpose only. And it, I'm fearful that as the surplus is spent down, that this will get forgotten. So I needed to say that and let you know that in case I don't see you next year, that's really an important thing that I hope stays in the, in the headlines. Okay?
Thank you very much. And I think I can express on behalf of several counselors, at least, that that is in the back of our heads and in our processes because we, we recognize that tremendous work that is happening there, and we don't want to eat into that success, generational tons of success over success.
If I may make one more comment. As you can tell from the very detailed nature of the budget and the very detailed nature of Vicky's presentation, there's a lot of minutia in, that goes into maintaining this budget. What I want to highlight for you as well is the tremendous work that they're doing over there. In the midst of having to count calories and menus and details on audits, what they're doing for the young people in our community is tremendous. We have a truancy program over there that's been expanded. They've been able to continue with that and add. There are many, many young people who go through their program, who have wonderful relationships with the counselors that they meet there, so much so that those counselors also will stay with those youth after they leave the shelter. If you've not been over there, it's a great facility. And I am fortunate to be able to be just kind of a sit here and, and watch the work get done. But really, they're doing a fantastic job. And I just wanted to make sure you understood that.
Thank you, Judge. We appreciate that very much. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right, we'll move on to item nine, which is court services.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 1000-0225, general fund courts with a category request of personnel $3,725,261, supplies $29,051, services $885,208, capital zero, for a total budget of $4,639,520.
Second.
Welcome back, Judge.
Judge DeKov is on her way. I expect her to walk it at any moment, so.
In her chair, right here, no.
Okay, this budget, I have kept exactly the same with one exception, which is in the line for depositions. If you recall, this year during the summer, I came before you and you approved this new line for me to have, but I was given $0. So I've been transferring money into that line. And I was told to budget for that for 2025. I have spent, as you can see here, 43,000 as of June 30th, and I am well over that as of right now. So I only went 75,000. This is the first time I've had it, so I don't know. But I went less than what, half, since I spent more than half of that. That's the only change I have made in this whole budget.
All right, counsel, questions? Counselor McKim?
Thank you. This is not so much a question, it's more kind of a reminder to some of my colleagues here that the line juvenile detention, you know, often we look at what they've already spent to date, and we try to get departments to reduce that amount. We do not do that with this, with this particular line because we know that we have to pay it regardless if, if the circumstances are, you know, justify that cost. And so, yeah, I mean, we're always happy to see that we're not sending a lot of juveniles to detention. And that reflects very well on Monroe County's judicial philosophy, and we really appreciate that. But that's not a line we attempt to reduce, even though they might not have spent all that much this year.
Thank you for that.
Yes. Counselor Hawk?
Right. And, and just as a reminder to the public, we cannot move that the detention expenses over to the special purpose fund by legislation. You're not allowed to do that. So just, I thought the only way we could do it is if we had our own detention facility. But Binkley House is not a detention facility.
Right.
And I'm not advocating for a detention facility.
I wanted to make that clear, too. All right. Welcome, Judge DeKov.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
I think.
Other comments or questions from counselors?
Very clean budget.
Wiltz?
It is a very clean budget, and I appreciate that. In the past, the guardian ad litem and popper attorney's lines had been insufficient. I think we increased that quite a bit, and it looks as though that's about right. Is that how you're feeling?
Well, not as of this morning. I ran my line. I can tell you, the popper attorney, I started this year with 125,000. As of this morning, I have spent 128,622.
Oh.
And we're only this far into this year. So I will be doing a lot of transferring and figuring out how I'm gonna do that. My guardian ad litem, I started with 127, or 125,000. As of this morning, I've spent 107,604. So I only have 17,300 left in that line. So, and I get the bulk of them usually in December, so.
Yes. Alrighty then, we'll see you soon.
See much better in June.
It did. I'm looking, I'm like, wow. Okay, all right. Well, it's important to have that in there. So we will take a little look at that. That's all I have.
Counselor McKim?
Mental health evaluations. I know that's always been, that's been a challenge. How is that going this year?
I start 100,000. As of this morning, I had spent 57,671. And I have right now eight outstanding invoices that I'm expecting that we've already done. I just haven't sent the invoices and then whatever else eval request that come in between now and the end of the year. So I expect that to be pretty much gone by the end of the year.
Yeah, but it sounds like, it looks like it's sort of on track, though, to what you
Yeah, I think it's gonna be a pretty good guess.
To spend it all. Okay.
What's gonna help is that there was a change in the law on July 1st by the Indiana legislative branch. In certain cases, certain cause numbers, we can, we can do with one evaluation as opposed to two. So it's gonna help with some of them. It doesn't apply to all of the, all of the causes, all of the levels, but it does apply to some of them. So that was because of the rising number of evaluations that are being done across the state, they addressed that. And that was.
Thank you.
All right, any final questions? Okay, well, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Right. We'll move next to public safety lit.
Yeah, it's okay. Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 1114 dash 0225 lit special purpose courts with a category request of personnel, $179,810, supplies, $2,625, services, $331,282, capital zero, for a total budget of $513,717.
Second.
Okay. In this budget, the only change that I made is in the CASA because they had a decrease in their federal funding of the 75,000. So I would need to pick that up. And if you have questions on that, I have Kristin Boucher in the back of the room, the director of CASA to answer any of your questions regarding that.
I myself would like to hear more about that, please, and thank you for coming. Welcome. Thank you for being with us and.
Of course.
Tell us more about this, please.
We get a federal grant and have been for a good 25, 30 years and it's the VOCA grant, Victims of Crime Assistance. And across the, for the last seven to 10 years, we have had a steady increase in funding. Last year though, we, it was announced that they were going to cut funding across the board 40%. That 40% is equivalent to $75,000 for us. This is one of the only grants that we can really apply for that actually pays for salaries. And they also pay for a service that we give, our multi-case casas, which are volunteers who take six or more cases at a time compared to one or two, or most of volunteers do. So it's a very important grant for us. If we were not to replace the money that is lost, we will probably have to reduce staff.
Thank you very much. Pretty stark. Questions from counsel, Counselor Wiltz?
So the, the whole CASA program is incredible and sorely needed and, and I, it, it always engenders mixed feelings for me because it seems like to me it shouldn't be a voluntary type of thing. I think it should be wholly funded by government. And it should be every requirement. So when I ask this, please know it's out of total respect, but could you talk a little bit about your, the employees, what they do versus what volunteers might do? Just to kind of clarify that, that structure for me.
Yes. We have my position as director. We have a resource development manager who recruits volunteers and does fundraising. We also have a, an office manager, but the other employees are what we call case coordinators. And they will train and supervise each of the volunteers. This role, again, we're using community volunteers who don't have backgrounds in juvenile law or social work. And that is the beauty of the program that they don't, but they need guidance and they need resources and they need someone to protect them in court, out of court, to understand what, that, what the, the situations are in the cases.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Well, if I may, I mean, by statute, any child who's adjudged a child in need of services has to have a CASA or guardian ad litem. In Monroe County, we have a structure where the volunteer advocate is the one may be assigned to a case and the case worker, the case managers are there as a guide. If we didn't have that structure, we would have to appoint a guardian ad litem anyway and could be a paid, you know, by the county guardian ad litem. We do have guardian ad items in other cases such as juvenile paternity cases, domestic relations cases where we have a custody matter or even in guardianships where we appoint a GAL and those positions are paid by the county for more, I wouldn't say professional, but we do have social service type background folks and sometimes attorneys. So the CASA program really does enable us to use and kind of be more efficient that way. But at the same token, it does require, because of our numbers, some expertise in training, expertise in supervising. And so it's money well spent. I have to say that it only in the last, what, year to two years, they've had these multi-case casas who are paid probably a minimal stipend. Do you understand the number of hours these folks put into these cases? And so it gives them a little bit of incentive because they're more experienced and can kind of handle more than one case at a time because it really becomes at least, if not a full-time job, a part-time job, you know, keeping track of everybody. So.
If I might add, I did the math and our CASA volunteers put in over 11,000 hours of volunteer work a year. If the county were to pay a guardian ad litem for that, what we're asking for the county, we're saving over $600,000 a year for that. So for the service that we provide.
Yeah.
Counselor Hock?
Yes. You folks have just said what my comment was going to be a while ago to a council member. Well, it's because we either get the volunteers to do it or we pay someone to do it because we must do it. It isn't, it, it's a part of what is the responsibility. So we're just fortunate in this community that we have so many people who really do want to help out. But if ever the time would come that there's not enough CASA workers to do it, the court will find somebody and we will pay them.
Mm-hmm. And if I could just say one more thing about that, from my seat, not only, oh, you know, presiding over the juvenile court, but also on the state advisory commission for GAL CASA. So I'm familiar with other programs in the state. Monroe County is a flagship program. So this is dollars well spent, for one thing. I want to shout to Kristin. She's getting ready to retire after many years at the helm of this program. With her expertise and devotion and passion to the program, she has built this program into a tremendous value for our juvenile court. And she pinches pennies and she does a lot with what she's got. Everybody over there is very dedicated as well. So.
Congratulations on almost retirement.
Oh, I can't wait. Thank you.
A lot of work, a lot of work. It's got you into that moment. Thank you. Other questions, comments? Counselor Hock?
Well, I, I think that for the volunteers, they are really getting a major reward as well because the one, people who volunteer for this really do it because they love to be of service. And it also broadens the awareness throughout the community. When those volunteers, they can't talk maybe about specific, they're not going to share personal things, but they can share what a joy it is and really how heartbreaking it can be as well to work with these young people and with the families and so forth. So it, it's a win-win as, but it's all because you've worked so hard at it and we appreciate it. It's been a long time.
Thank you. Really done this. I've been with the program for 28 years.
Wow. That's awesome.
Right. Back when it was Roberta, what is, what's her name? Roberta Weisong? Am I pronouncing that right? With, with the youth shelter and, and so forth. I think that was right when our youth shelter was there, near where the library is now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. That was before.
That was before you.
That was before me, but.
All right. Let's sing the other counsel comments. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hock?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. Thank you so much and congratulations again. We'll move on to now public safety lit.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 1170 dash 0225 public safety lit courts with a category request of personnel zero, supplies zero, services $283,790, capital zero, for a total budget of $283,790.
Second.
Okay. This budget again stayed the same. It is just to pay for our, the ASI security guards in the justice building and the Curry building.
Questions, comments from counselors?
So question that, but did you recently have a change in staff? Or there's like a question going on in my brain that I was going.
Thinking the bailiff. The bailiff is in mining county general. This is the ASI security guards. It's either David Gardner.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Right. Singing done, we'll go to a roll call vote on this budget.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hock?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right. Next up, alternative dispute resolution.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 2200 dash 0000, alternative dispute resolution with a category request of personnel zero, supplies $500, services $313,200, capital $1,000 for a total budget of $14,700.
Second.
Okay. And again, I kept this budget exactly the same. No change at all.
Okay. Questions from counsel? Counselor Wiltz?
So forgive me, um, I don't know what this funds.
This is for basically pays for mediation for those people in, say divorce cases that cannot afford the mediator, that they qualify for the low income. They come over and that's what we take out of the contractual and we have a set fee that a local attorney will come and do it and we pay.
Contractual. I was like, but there's no person, there's no people. Got it. To me, that would be the biggest expense. That makes sense. Thank you.
Other questions? Because in other situ, the people going through that process pay for the mediator, right?
If they can afford it, the judge deems they can, they might have to split it between the husband and wife that are getting the divorce 50/50. If they can't do it at all and they meet requirements, then it's kind of like a sliding scale.
That's, that sounds.
And that's our family court coordinator is in charge of the scale and she turns in the invoices if she has to get a mediator.
Other questions? We good? Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim? Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hock?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Next up is jury pay.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 2511 dash 0000, jury pay user fees with a category request of personnel zero, supplies zero, services $36,500, capital zero, for a total budget of $36,500.
Second.
Okay. And once again, I kept this budget the same. It pays for jury trials.
Questions, comments? Counselor Hock?
Need better glasses. So what's the balance in there now?
What, um, I had to check this morning. The cash balance is $78,087 and one cent is what's in the fund of my 35,000. We turned a claim in today for 2,428.88 because I have actually two jury funds, one in county general and one here. But I have three big trials. I've been told murder and rape and that's going to be coming out of this between now and the end of the year.
Right. That's why I was asking the question because I, watching what's going on in the news, I think you, you may be busy with jury trials.
And this year they increased the jury pay. They basically doubled it. Instead of $40 a day, it's now $80 a day for the first five days. And then it goes to $90 a day for those seated. So it's doubling all of my jury claims.
And it's still not enough because if you're called for, to serve on the jury, it doesn't matter what your home life is or what, if you have to, you know, if you're missing work or whatever, you, it might really be costing your family budget a whole lot more than what you're going to be making on this. And you can't say, well, I can't afford to do it because you have to, you have to.
How to do it. It's constitution. I, I wanted to compliment your, that team. And it's probably one of the most public facing teams with just your average folks walking around the street. And then there's been a couple of times I've had constituents who are, they, they get nervous about, they inquire about it and your folks are just on the spot in relieving that. And when I've been on the pool myself, I, that's one of the most easiest processes for something that is not necessarily the, the most normal processes. So I really want to compliment that.
Thanks. I take pride in that one because I did that job for 19 years. So.
Well, you did well. It's a good standard. Yes?
Yes. I had quite an experience many years ago when they, someone came up to me on the street and said, you know, you're coming right now. Oh, I can't, I've got this money I have. I'm getting ready to deposit. It's not my money. It belonged to the company. And you know, it was no, and you're coming right now. And you had to sit down there and you can't make a phone call and you were just, I mean, I was beside myself. I thought people are going to think I have made off with this money from the closing that I didn't get to take.
They had to come and see me and I got the blunt of it. So.
It was terrifying to me.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hock?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right. We'll go to the next budget.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 8895 dash 0000, title four D incentive with a category request of personnel $47,757, supplies zero, services zero, capital 9,500 for a total budget of $57,257.
Second.
Okay. And again, this one has stayed the same, just a change in Commissioner Raper since his salary is a percentage of the judge's salary. But this pays for a part of Commissioner Raper in the title 40 program.
All right. Questions, comments from counselors? Good. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hock?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right. We'll go on to item number 10.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 1,000 dash 0226, general fund probation with a category request of personnel $3,71,779, supplies zero, services $4,000, capital zero, for a total budget of $3,700, um, excuse me, $3,75,779.
Second.
All right. Welcome Linda and Anthony. And of course Judge DeKoff is back with us. Welcome. You can start. Thanks for waiting.
Okay. Um, thank you very much. Good evening to everyone. I just wanted to first start by introducing our team, starting with myself, Chief Probation Officer. And you already know, presenting Judge DeKoff, and then Anthony Williams, he's our new Deputy Chief Probation Officer. And we also have on teams, part of our team, Becca Strite, who's the other Deputy Chief Probation Officer and our Community Corrections Executive Director. And Melissa Wallace, who's our Office Administrator. It really does take a village to do all of these budgets and I appreciate our team. I also want to give a shout out to Troy Hatfield, our former Deputy Chief Probation Officer, and thank you to the county council. You gave us money to be able to retain his services after he. after he went to a different job. And he has been training Anthony and Anthony's, he's fast becoming the new numbers guy, the new Troy, because he knows how to do the numbers. So wanted to give Troy a shout out. Just real quick summary of the probation budgets. We have 28 budgets and that's up by 10 budgets. We had 18 budgets when I came before you last year, but we've received more grants this year. Most of our expenses are personnel related. About 88% of our expenses are for personnel. Our, our budgets are divided between tax, about 60%, user fees, about 14%, and grants, about 26%. Summary of what we're going to be talking about tonight with the budgets, the, starting with the probation officer minimum salary schedule. The Indiana salary schedule went up by 3% for 2025. All of the submitted budgets though, with personnel, step raises only, no COLA. And that includes for the probation officers. And that was because I talked to my council liaisons that it would just be easier just to have, do no COLA for anybody and just wait till after COLA's decision was made. We also increased self-insurance as we were supposed to, to $13,000. And generally our budgets are flatlined with a few exceptions that I'll talk about when I get to each of those budgets. Wanted to just briefly talk about staff turnover. You already know we've been through a lot of turnover in the past few years since COVID. We've only had three weeks total where we had a full staff. So, but I do want to say that the, the probation officer turnover seems to be going down. Past couple of years, it's been 20%. In the past year, it's been about 7%. And I would like to give some credit to the County Council here because you did give COLAs to probation officers that were above the minimums that were given to the, the state probation officers. You gave us the county raise and that, I really believe that made a difference. And also we got our longevity restored right before longevity got ended. But that, I thi- I do think that made a big difference and has really reduced the turnover for probation officers. For field, Community Corrections Field Officers, that continues to be an issue. We still have between 40 to 50% turnover with that staff. But at this moment, I'm afraid to say Judge Decop will hit me here, but I have no vacancy.
You just said it.
She's afraid I'm gonna jinx it. Each of the budgets, I'll, I'll talk about, I've increased a little bit of advertising cost because it costs a lot more to advertise than it used to on Indeed. But I only put increases for that in user fee budgets only and not in any of the tax based funds. I also increased travel training because travel has gone up, hotels, meals, things like that have gone up. And I, I increased that in user fee budgets, again, not county, the Public Safety Lit or the County General Budget. We'll talk about, briefly about security cost increase. For many years, we have contracted as a county with Alliance Security that hires state troopers to do security at Community Corrections in the morning between 7:00 and 9:00 AM during our high volume day reporting hours. They ended our contract because the state troopers got a very nice raise and they didn't want to work a second job and who can blame them? They don't have to. So we had to change gears and we did find a security company who was willing to work with us and that's Crimson Security. However, they asked for more money than what we were paying for the state troopers. So it was about a 70%, 72% increase per hour. So it went from $35 an hour to $60 an hour. And so that increase, I've split between two budgets and that would be the Public Safety Lit and the Special Purpose Lit. So those are some of the major increases. And the last one I wanted to talk about is the increase in part-time probation officer assistant line for our part-time staff. Years ago, the Department of Correction, our Community Corrections Grant is where we funded our part-time probation officer assistance. Over the years, we have had to cut it down to nothing as far as how much the grant will pay for part-timers. And that is because the state of Indiana has not increased funding for Community Corrections Grants for at least the last six years. The budgets have been flatlined and that's the state budget issue because the priority and they'll, they would, DLC was, tell you the priority was prison. That building a new prison was their priority. And so they did not ask for, nor did they receive any increases in Community Corrections Grants. So if you take, it's, that's our largest grant. You take that grant and you flatline it for six years. You think, well, where's the, the COLA coming from? The step increases, the increases in, in FICA and, and perf and insurance? It's coming from project income and that's user fee funds. Well, user fee funds are soft source of money and it, it's just not a good way to, to fund staff. So I did increase some lines, which we'll talk about specifically when we get there for probation officer assistance. And then the last thing, we did ask for a new position.
We asked for a new position and we're withdrawing that request at this time. So it's the data specialist for J-RAC. And we're withdrawing it from, from our budget request tonight. We are waiting, WIS is looking at it. We're going to wait to see what their recommendation is. And then we're going to try to find funding elsewhere first. And if we can find funding elsewhere first, then we'll pay for that, for that position out of that. And if not, you may see us again, but it is the J-RAC Director. The reason that it was in the budget is because the General Assembly put requirements, mandates for a J-RAC. We have a, a J-RAC Committee and it's very good. But it, the new mandates require a lot more record keeping and data keeping. So, but we are going to look at it a different way first. So tonight we're withdrawing it from the budget. And we wanted to tell you that first before we got started on the rest of the budget. So.
Thank you very much and thanks for the update. Questions from counselors, I think? Yeah, Counselor McKim?
Thank you very much. Yeah, first of all, just very, very well-run department. We really always appreciate the information and the professional manner that, that you give it to us. I definitely support this J-RAC position and I do hope that you are able to find funding. And I'm certainly eager to do anything I can to, to help. But I also appreciate you offering to remove it from the general fund request at this time. So Counsel, I move, we set line 11126 Data Specialist to zero.
Second.
All right, we've got an amendment motion here on this budget. Any further discussion on the amendment? Likewise appreciated and, and I'm interested, wanted to be supportive. All right, seeing none, let's do a voice vote on this amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passed unanimously. All right, back to the underlying budget. Questions or comments?
So we're looking just at general.
General, Michelle's got to do her update too, right? So I'll give her a second for that.
Can I ask a question while she's doing that?
Absolutely, I think so.
All right. You mentioned, you were talking about turnover of employees. And I'm not sure if I heard correctly. You said 40 to 50% turnover still with field officers?
With the Community Corrections Field Officers, yes.
And why do you think that is? I mean, is that just salary? Or is there more to it?
There's probably more to it. I, I would say that the kind of person who wants to work a job, I mean, let's face it, they're on call 24/7, they work evenings, they work weekends, they're out in the field, they're out in people's homes. And it's, it's not the most glamorous job. There are some, some people who do those sorts of jobs might want to have, be armed. Our officers are not armed. There are some counties where their officers, they're, they're law enforcement officers or they're special deputies, they're, but they're armed. Ours are not. So it has a little bit different of, of, kind of a different flavor. Some people who apply for those jobs are people who want to be law enforcement. And we've had people who've left our department and become sheriff's deputies or be probation officers or something else. So, you know, you get, you get people, I think, who see it as a stepping stone to get some experience too. So I think that's also part of it. We are trying to make it so that there's not so much interruption of their sleep at night with policies. And this, I'll have to say with the, the judges and their policy, trying to decide what things, what kind of violations that happen in the middle of the night, do we have to immediately get a warrant or we need to, or can we wait till tomorrow? Or can we wait till the next business day? And there are, but the legislature has-
There are, there are some things that the legislature says has to happen immediately, almost immediately. So we've looked at our policies and we looked at the law and so we, we try to work with that as well. It's not, as Linda said, it's not the most glamorous of jobs.
Do they share call coverage so that they do have, I mean, you said they're on call 24/7. Do you mean collectively or individually?
Individually, but they can, they can trade off their phones with each other. They all tend to be very possessive of their caseloads and not want to give up their cases to another officer. But they can, I mean, they, they want to take a day off or take a vacation, absolutely, they can. They, it's just, they tend to not want to do that. But someone has to be respond, it is by law, we have to respond 24/7. And there is a new law that went into effect, if people are on electronic monitoring, that there is, especially if they've committed an offense against a person.
But they're not going out there.
Right.
They're not going out there. The law says that the victim has to be notified.
Yeah.
So when it, when it alerts, then the victim has to be notified that the alert has gone off in certain crimes. We're, we're not sending out these people into homes at 2:00 in the morning by themselves.
And that's a good clarification to make, for sure.
But the way that the law is written is that when the alert goes off, then they are to, i- if certain things have happened or they can't get, oh, we can't figure out where the person is, then the victims have to be notified within a certain amount of time. So that's what our policies address. But no, 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 we're not sending out these unarmed, part-time people. And no, no, no.
Yeah, no.
I, I just wanted to clarify that one because yes, they are woken up, but it's not like we're sending them out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so I would say we were trying to do things policy-wise, better equipment. Some of the equipment tends to get better with the GPS. You probably know this, that GPS was never designed to do this. It was, it's to pinpoint a person to a tiny little location, it's really not designed for that. And so it, the satellites are not always perfect. So, but it gets better and I think as it gets better, they're interrupted less in their sleep. But we have a very good crew. I have to give them a shout out too, because we have-
Excellent, excellent officers.
They're very dedicated to their jobs. Thank you.
I think Michelle's got the bottom line here.
Yes, I removed the salary for the data specialist to zero. We also removed the full-time insurance amount, which was $13,000. We adjusted the FICA to, so the full-time insurance is now $377,000. The FICA is now $165,646. The perf is $293,189 for a total personnel of $3,1,141 with a total fund change of $3,5,141.
Counselor Iverson looks like you have anything else?
Uh, I have a further question. Is now the appropriate time? Mr. President?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Out of fairness, I've been asking this question a lot. I'm in your services category on line 30800, your postage line. Do you have one of these machines? Do you know what the balance is? You didn't expend anything. We're asking for more money.
Well, we actually just got this added a couple of years ago. We are, the courts pay our postage and so this is our contribution towards that. So we don't have a machine. We send it through the courts. And I was asked a few years ago, when the clerk stopped mailing the mail and the court started mailing it, if we would contribute. So this is our contribution. So we don't have a machine, so I don't know what the balance is or- I just know that this is our portion and our share of, of the postage for the courts. Yes. And then the next, then the only other item that isn't personnel is our workforce manager software for, for the field officers when they're out in the field. They, there's AT&amp;T app that tracks them. So we have cookie crumbs wherever they go, we know where they are. We know how fast they're driving. We know how long they stayed at people's houses. And it's, we, we institute that as a safety measure for our officers. So that's what that's-
Wow. Thank you. I, I do want to kind of follow up your comments earlier about the vacancy and that, that change. And I, I want to say that a compliment to the way that you had advocated and informed to us about all those vacancies and issues back when that was a more robust issue. For any probation officer that might catch these comments or watch this later on, that was so thorough with us, not just in these meetings, but with regular communication and regular updates and, and a good persistence that we needed to hear that when that situation changed, there were times where I thought, well, they must be okay because she's not said anything. And that, that kind of advocacy, I think, speaks to the, the reputation for the, which you went after that. And that was helpful in our role so that we didn't lose sight of that. And I'm glad to hear the, the news and we'll knock on wood, but yeah.
Well, and, and our probation officers, especially the ones who've been here for a long time, of course, they very much appreciate to get their longevity back. Because those who, who remember when they used to get it before 2003, who are still here, really appreciated that. But they really appreciated also to be treated like, like their county employee. And not to be punished for the fact that the state has a minimum salary schedule. So they, I'm glad you said that, Trent, because people, they, they watch and they, they very much appreciated the County Council's support.
Other, Counselor Hawke?
Yes, I know it probably, I'm no surprise to you that there's many people at the state level working very hard to get the state to pay for the probation officers. I mean, from many years, there's the thought amongst many council members that if the state is going to set the salary, the state's going to put all the rules in place, that it's up to the courts, the judges are paid by the state. And if the, the probation officers are there at the will of the judges, that there's the thought that the state should also pick up probation cost. Doesn't mean they wouldn't still be here, but the state would pay for that and all the expenses. So we shouldn't be surprised if that does eventually happen because there's so much effort going into doing that. And you can imagine that there's just a whole lot of counties that really are not as fortunate as we are. We do have more revenue than many counties, but we've got some of the smaller counties who are, you know, they're, they're just cannot make ends meet. So I, I would not be at all surprised to see a bigger effort put behind that this time.
Great.
Any final comments? All right, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Next up, Lit Special Purpose.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 1114-0273 Lit Special Purpose Probation with a category request of personnel $968,550, supplies $4,000, services $109,220, capital $2,000, yes, $2,000, for a total budget of $183,770.
Second.
The only increases in this budget would be for the self-insurance, the travel training increase and the security increase that I just talked about that split between this budget and the, the Public Safety Lit.
Yeah, Counselor Hawke?
Yes, how did you decide? Yes, how did you decide, uh, how much of the split it should be? You, you split it 50/50?
That was just what happened a few years ago. We just did it 50/50 and I just continued it. I mean, there's not really much rhyme or reason. It's that it can go in both, but.
A- as you might know, we have, um, reduced the, uh, rate going into special purpose. And so we need to watch very carefully, uh, that we're not spending that down quicker than what had been anticipated. And so I would be really shocked if, if the services should be equal because surely you don't have as many for juveniles as you do for the adult probate.
Yeah, there, there actually, we do, there's two officers that, uh, upstairs and two downstairs at community corrections.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm thinking about A S I, but you know, you're right. This is the, um, security upstairs.
Right, so, um, that's just the thought. I think we need to keep an eye on it because we don't want, we don't want that special purpose to really, uh, end up being shorter than, than what we had projected it would work for. And, um, the other thing, the other question I had, because I've had some, I was, I've been talking with some of the other council members throughout the state. And so this may not be at all the appropriate time to ask this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. And you can say, not me, not my turn, whatever. But she is saying that they have a J S A P, J C A P program in the jail. And so when I was hearing you talk about J RAC and I thought, what is this? Or maybe she hit her hand on the wrong key, but what is a J C A P?
Are you talking about the J RACs that the?
Well, that's what.
It, it stands for jail chemical addiction program.
Oh, maybe that's what it is, huh?
I've never, I've never heard of it either.
Never heard of it, yes.
Uh, they have a program in the jail and just recently created a navigator position to help those, uh, 90 days, 60 days and 30 days before release to be prepared to transition back. I mean.
Never heard of it.
I, I didn't know whether that would have anything to do with what you folks were doing. I just wanted to ask that question. If you don't know, then.
Yeah, never, never heard of it.
Well, you know, sometimes we think we know everything and guess what? We can learn a lot by talking with these other folks. And it's just a shame that we don't, all of us go to the AIC meetings.
Well, one thing I would say, Marty, is that, that our job obviously isn't in the jail. Our's is community supervision. So we, uh, we do actually have a grant that's not before you tonight, the sequential intercept model, where we're getting people, uh, transitioned out of jail and straight into treatment. So Anthony's been coordinating that grant. And, uh, Centerstone actually has a staff person who's in our office and meeting with, with the clients and doing intakes in the probation office. So we're doing our piece, which is community supervision piece and the reentry and all that.
Right, well, I'd heard you sort of discuss that and I thought, well, is that, could this be the same thing? I don't know, it was just, I just wanted to ask the question. Thank you.
Counselor Iverson?
I'm going to get back into the budget. I'm in the services category, uh, and in, uh, lines 32113 and 32114 is drug testing and electronic monitoring. Those didn't go up at all. I would presume those costs did go up. So a- am I not understanding the situation correctly?
This is the special purpose lit, so it's for juvenile. And a couple of years ago, our juvenile judge quit charging.
That's right.
Any non-mandatory juvenile fees. And I suppose we could just cut it out because we're not using it at this point. But yeah, that's a good question, though. But our ju- our juvenile judges, they do not charge any non-mandatory fees at all. So that's home detention, drug testing, anything.
I guess I'm not, I'm not sure how that, um, so these are expenditure lines.
Well, I'm sorry, yes, so I guess that's, that's true. That's not reimbursement, yes. I was thinking we're in juvenile. We have too many budgets. This is special purpose, this is where we pay the, this is where we pay the lab and where we pay the electronic monitoring company. Yes.
Thank you, you read my mind.
Yeah, no, from the, yeah, exactly, the juvenile. Is that what I was thinking?
Counselor hot?
Yes. Many years ago, uh, we covered, uh, four juvenile probation officers in what we called, we called it the welfare budget, but it was for, uh, the DCS budget. And, uh, when we would say, well, why don't we get the state to pay for it? And, and the state would say, we pay for all the caseworkers. Well, no, this was something that the courts had just sort of worked in. And so, I mean, it was all coming out of local dollars, but it was worked through that particular budget. Then when the state said they were going to take over that budget entirely, we were like, oh, wow, are we going to pay for these? Or juvenile, there were four, uh, it, within the DCS budget. And that's when I can remember right in the middle of the conversation here during budget time. And Judge Galvin and I went out in the hallway and I said, look, look at the legislation. I believe we could cover those juvenile probation officers with this special purpose money. Or we would have, and there was nothing in that budget originally for, uh, juvenile probation. So when you look at how the budget went up, it was not intended when we first put it together to cover the probation officers.
No, that was actually, there was a huge, I mean, that was kind of a big public controversy when it happened, too. I mean, that was, Linda remembers that.
Well, if we hadn't done that, I don't know what, how we would have covered.
It was definitely the right decision, but, um, no, I.
So for people who think I just don't want to provide for services, I worked hard to get that done. Just, just, you know, and I'd say, good for me.
Yeah, sometimes those controversial decisions get better with time. All right, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz? Motion passed unanimously.
Take the lead.
Public safety lit, um, the. Very good, you're good, you are right.
Um, counsel, I'm moved to open, I'm tired, so I'm delirious right now. Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 117D-0226 public safety lit probation with a category request of personnel $221,876, supplies zero, services $312, nope, see? Services $312,780, capital zero, for a total budget of $534,656.
Second.
Okay. The increases in this budget are the full-time self-insurance, some increase to probation officer, the part-time POAs, as I've mentioned earlier, and half of the community corrections security with Crimson Security. And that's it.
Questions, comments from counselors? And I'm looking, not seeing any. All right, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, we'll go to court alcohol drug user fees.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 2504-0000, court alcohol drug user fees with a category request of personnel $162,194, supplies $10,000, services $47,100, capital $2,000, for a total budget of $221,294.
Second.
Right.
Okay, court alcohol and drug, uh, user fees can only be used to support the court alcohol and drug program, salaries and, um, operating expenses for our staff. So it's very limited. So the increases are full-time self-insurance and an increase in travel training and the cost, uh, increase in special services for advertising, and that's it.
Yeah. We'll go to questions, comments from counselors. Not seeing any. We'll go to a roll call vote on this budget.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, now problem solving court user fees.
Counsel, I, I move to open for discussion and review fund 2506-0000, problem solving court user fees with a category request of personnel $13,457, supplies $2,000, services $38,050, capital $2,000, for a total budget of $55,507.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, um, I mentioned earlier about getting more grants. So this is one area we did. In, in the past, we were only able to apply for up to $10,000 for drug court. That was it. That was the maximum and we used it for drug testing supplies and bus tickets and things like that. But, uh, because we have four problem solving courts, we were allowed to apply for grants for each of the four problem solving courts. So with that, we have been able to buy drug testing instant cups for the problem solving court. So the, it's not the most fun thing to do, but we, instant cups, if, if it's negative, it's a screen, it gets poured out and we don't have to send it to the lab, so it saves cost. So the problem solving court people are not paying anything. We're not charging them.
Charging them anymore. We're not charging them for instant cups, which is a huge saving to them as well.
That's big.
So, yeah, it is, it really is.
Yes.
And, I mean, it's interesting because I think people have different perceptions about people who are in drug problem solving courts. Um, and the problem solving court people, we're thrilled, um, because it does make a big difference to them. And so we were very pleased to be able to do that because it's a big help to the, to, to our people who are in those courts.
So now we only have to send, uh, for confirmation if the test comes back, if it's positive, the instant test. And we do send it to the lab and that costs us, uh, $25. So, uh, previously what they were paying was $10 for the instant cup. And then if it was positive, then they'd have to pay the 25 for the lab. So it was quite costly for people, especially if they tested positive. So at, at this point, our, our problem solving court, Anthony might know better than I do, but the, the, uh, positive test rate is right around 4% or sometimes less. Compared to the department as a whole, just regular probation, it's more in the neighborhood of 30 to 32% positive rate.
Which is why we have four problem solving courts.
Yeah.
Just saying.
So it makes a difference. The, the accountability makes a difference. And people who are in problem solving court will tell you that, I mean, they, they know they're going to be held accountable and a 4% positive rate is very low.
That's incredible.
So anyway, that's, uh, problem solving court fund. It can only be used to, to support the problem solving court. So we did do some increases in travel training and costs for advertising, but we're not asking for anything more out of this because we are getting much more grant support, uh, for problem solving court.
Okay. All right, other questions? Counselor Wiltz?
4%, that's amazing, um.
You come and see us sometime. Just saying. I mean, really.
I'm seriously about.
All the things that I've done and, and the things that, in the years that I've been in the system, the problem solving courts are the most rewarding thing that we do. They are the most frustrating that we do as well.
Yeah.
Very frustrating, very time consuming as well. But, um, they're, yes, they are the most rewarding.
I am going to come and visit.
What I'd like to do is, uh, the next time we have a graduation is invite you to the graduation and then invite you to say a few words because that would mean a lot to my participants as well. It would, it would mean a lot to them to, to have any one of you come and any one of you speak.
It would be honored.
It would made a great, it would mean a great deal to them. It really would. And it would, yes, so. You'll be hearing from me, thank you.
My question is, would you have more people going through problem solving courts if you had more capacity?
Yes.
Okay.
More money, more ability, yes, I would.
I mean, it just seems like.
Yes.
A no-brainer.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
The prosecutor's office is very supportive of the problem solving courts. The, the defense bar is supportive of the problem solving courts. And, but yes, I mean, we can only do what we have capacity to do. And we, we were concerned when, um, the level sixes, um, didn't have to go to prison. We were concerned because that that was, that it would be less of an incentive. And for a little bit it was, but then really it's not. So, but yes, I, you know.
The what? What besides money would impact your ability, your capacity, like?
Truthfully, it would be personnel as far as, um, case managers, because I, I need to have case managers. I mean, a- as for the rest of it, probably not so much because we have court in the courtroom and the case managers meet with them in. But the more, the more participants we would add, we would have to add case managers because one of the reasons we can do so well is because of the, um, relationship that they develop with their case manager and the time that the case manager puts into this workload, because it is very intense. They start off seeing their case manager every week, if not more frequently, if they're having issues. The case managers work with the treatment providers. We have the team that has treatment providers. I mean, the, that's the other thing about problem solving courts. It is a really good, um, you can see the relationship of where we deal with other agencies, other treatment providers, other places to be able to get the assistance we need for the people in the program. And, you know, while I'm on the subject, I'm going to say that in each of my courts, including my veterans' court, there are services that we can get for people more quickly because they're in the criminal justice system than if they were not in the criminal justice system. Simply because of the relationships, um, and the, and the, um, supervision that comes with the participants when they go do other things, when they do enter other programs, when they're involved, if they're staying at, um, you know, if they're staying in a residential facility or whatever. It's because with them comes us, the team and, and the supervision. So, and we're very cognizant of making sure that the people we place and the people we go, that, that we're, that we are doing supervision so that they are not being a problem for the places that they are and the treatment providers.
How many? How many case managers do you have across the four courts?
Six. Six, three for drug court, one for veterans' court, one for reentry court and one for mental health court.
Did I add six?
Six.
And then there's a coordinator. Then coordinator, Steve Malone.
Thank you. There's a lot to think about and a lot of possibilities, you know?
Yes, thank you, I think about them all the time.
I bet you do. I bet you do. I tell you what, and then I will shut up, I promise. But I've been the liaison to these folks this year and you will have to fight me to give that up because I have learned so much and I feel like I know this much. I am still, every single time I go to one of the, the meetings and I'm like, so how does that work? Really? You know, just mind-blowing stuff all the time. And so, and in awe of all you actually get done and how you do it. And so, anyway, I'll, I'll.
But I said it on Tuesday and I meant it. I, this, the, the reality is, is that problem solving courts couldn't exist. What we do couldn't exist without the cooperation and the willingness and the, um, openness of the county council. It just could not. And, and I also go out and talk to other colleagues and talk to people from other counties and other places. And we're fortunate, we are very fortunate and we know that and we appreciate that very much. And we appreciate your interest and I'm serious. Any one of you, if you ever want to come to a graduation, uh, but I will be contacting you, um, because really it, it would, it would mean a lot that you were, that you were there and, and, uh, then you can hear. Because we talk, we talk a little bit about how they began and then where they're ending up. I'm very proud of them. I'm, I'm, I think it takes a lot of courage to enter into a problem solving court, a lot of courage on the part of the participant because you have to do a lot of work and you have to do a lot of work on. because you have to do a lot of work, and you have to do a lot of work on your issues. And as I say to them, there's a lot of people walking around in the world who are never going to do that.
Oh, yeah.
So, okay, now I'll shut up.
Counselor Iverson?
I'm going to volunteer that I have attended a graduation. I cried. It's very touching. I will also maybe indulgently ask you a question. A little bird has told me that it might be the 25th year of one of these courts.
Next year, it's going to be the 25th anniversary of Drug Treatment Court, and actually, it's this year, and we are going to do something. But what we're talking about doing, I would really like to make more of a celebration and a celebration of the participants and the past participants. So now we're looking at the spring, so that we can have it in better weather. And then we can, we can have the emphasis being on the participants and their accomplishments, and not inviting a bunch of, like, stuffy speakers to speak. So we will. No, 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 I'm not calling you stuffy. I'm also, I'm actually talking about, I'm talking about like on a national level, because typically with these kind of things, you try to find somebody on the national level to come and talk about drug treatment courts. And with all due respect to them, that's fine, but we all understand what these are. So I'd like to make it a little bit more fun. And so we're going to wait till the spring, because I happen to know somebody who owns a Hot Air balloon. And so we'd like to do tethers, you know, under the whole all-rise theory, you know, that we rise together and stuff like that. So, and I'm going to have a couple of graduates. I've got one who's a disc jockey, and he'll be graduated by then, so I can ask him to come, because he can't do that while he's on the program, you know, and that kind of thing. But you will all definitely be invited. Yes.
Thank you.
So fun.
Do you have anything else?
No, we, we need to get back to the budgets.
Well, this is, these numbers are incredible. And when we talk about programming, other things to support, I think you chase the numbers that work. In 25 years of that is incredible. Let's go to a roll call on this, I think, if there's.
I'm very patient.
All right.
Okay, I do recall when Judge Todd, as we all remember, that he wanted that problem-solving court so bad.
He did not. Not to interrupt you and not to be rude, but no, he did not. Judge Todd had to be talked into a drug treatment court. When he did, when he got one, he was very enthused about it. No, actually, he didn't say it to me. He actually said it. He was, he started this before, he actually started this before I became a judge.
But what I wanted to say, as nicely as I can, please, that one of your staff members went to the training session that we had at the convention center to learn how to write grants. And she wrote a grants program and long-term employee. And I'm just saying, that makes the difference when you have people who are so dedicated that they want to do whatever it takes to make it work. So whether that be some advertiser, whoever, what's that, I'm just wanting to say kudos for the staff who said, "I'm going to go get the money to make this work." But the other question I had was, is this for the grants that you are getting now, which is a whole lot more than what, what started out with? Does this require you to take people in for these services that are not Monroe County residents?
No, it doesn't require us to. We are, we are able to, if they're accepted by the judge. And it's very, our veterans' court grant is a regional grant, actually. So it has Lawrence County, Owen, I'm trying to remember, Green. So that's a regional grant.
Right, right, that part. But I guess more it was like the.
We're not, yeah, we're not required.
Because that was, was that last year, year before, that the state said no longer could someone just go to, when they released them from the DOC, they couldn't, they were no longer going to just take them wherever they wanted to go, unless where they wanted to go had a problem-solving court that would take them. So is that still, I mean, are you working with them on that issue?
We've never had that request.
Thank you.
I do have a Green County person in veterans' court that we took. And it's the only problem-solving court person that Green County's ever actually allowed to go into a problem-solving court. But we're not required to.
Cap. All right. Looks like we're ready to move on to a roll call on this budget.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Let's go to adult probation user fees.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 2508-0000, adult probation user fees with a category request of personnel $228,840, supplies $5,000, services $9,500, capital $2,000, for a total budget of $265,340.
Second. Right.
Okay, adult probation user fees can only be used by statute to supplement adult probation operating expenses. I also want to point out, this budget is interchangeable with the Court Alcohol and Drug Services Fund that you've already appropriated, because we have a unified probation department with, that our entire adult probation division is our Court Alcohol and Drug Program. So they're all trained, they're all alcohol and drug professionals. And so what we try to do, and this is kind of on Anthony, every month, we get projections of how, and how much money's coming in, how much money's going out. And if one budget, between this budget and the Court Alcohol and Drug Program budget, whichever one's doing better, that's where we pay bills from. And other than salaries, which we have to pay, but if there are optional things such as supplies or services, we go by which of these two funds is doing better with the user fees. The increases in this budget, full-time self-insurance, travel training, and cost for advertising, and that's it.
Okay. Questions, comments from counselors? Looking, I'm not seeing any. Okay, let's go to a roll call on this budget.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
And counselors, we've got three more items under this budget grouping, and then we'll take a recess to get a stretch for the next portion. All right.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 2509-0000, juvenile probation user fees with a category request of personnel $5,383, supplies $3,000, services $10,000, capital $1,500, for a total budget of $19,883.
Second.
These juvenile probation user fees can only be used to supplement juvenile probation operating expenses. And just to remind you that the judges have eliminated all non-mandatory juvenile fees, which that includes this. So there will be no more new money coming in. It's possible somebody may feel guilty about something they owed from 20 years ago, or they might come in and pay it, but no more new money's coming into it. But we, we do have a small cash balance in it, so we did increase the travel training a small bit, and that's the only increase.
Questions, comments from counselors? Looking here, looking there. All right, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, next up, project income user fees.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 2510-0000, project income user fees with a category request of personnel $563,818, supplies $56,750, services $55,000, capital $2,500, for a total budget of $678,068.
Second. Ms. Brady?
Okay, the project income is a community corrections user fee fund. This is our biggest user fee fund that we have. And this budget is a complementary budget to our community corrections grant. Back when we got our first grant, actually, we just are celebrating our 40th year of getting community corrections grant and having community corrections program. So, long time. And at the beginning, when community corrections grants existed, there was no such thing as project income. The grant paid for 100% of community corrections. That ended over the years, and then user fees became a thing. And so at this point, as we've already talked about, the grant has been flatlined, so the user fees have had to take up for the past six years, the COLAs, increases in fringes, anything that the grant doesn't pay for. And the grant did use to pay for electronic monitoring, drug testing, a lot. It's all, it's all salary now. That's it. So the, we know we're dealing with a flatline budget for next year with the community corrections grant. We already know what we're getting. So our increases in project income are going to be for the COLA, if there is a COLA, and self-insurance increases, FICA and PERF. And so we did put a small travel, excuse me, travel training increase. But other than that, tried to flatline it as much as possible.
Yeah, let's see, we've got questions or comments from counselors. Counselor Hawk?
Yes. Is this the budget that at one time, people, if they got in trouble for doing whatever, and depending on the person, they would be assigned to, I know that at one point in time, they were supposed to be helping shovel the snow, and.
And that road crew and public restitution.
Whatever you call it. And do they not do that anymore at all?
Well, so road crew ended because of budget cuts, because the DOC will, quite a few years ago, decided, excuse me, they would not fund road crew or public restitution programs, because they didn't see that as diverting from prison. So it was on the locals to fund that, and so we were funding it from user fees. Well, there was just no way we could keep up with funding all the staff that we had for road crew and for public restitution. So road crew ended quite a few years ago. And, but we do have a public restitution program where people still do community service work. They get assigned to agencies or government entities to do their community service work. So that's still happening.
Okay. But, but not like cleaning up a road.
Along the road or doing that kind of thing. Because it. Road crew ended because of, right, when the DOC cut, and we just could not keep up with it with user fees, right?
Other comments, other questions? Okay, seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, next, we'll go to offender transportation.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 4916-0000, offender transportation with a category request of personnel zero, supplies zero, services $3,000, capital zero, for a total budget of $3,000.
Second.
Okay, this is my annual shout-out to Eric Spoonmore. This was his former counselor. He, this was his favorite budget of all the budgets. The fund can only be used to retake probationers who violate probation in another state, and we have to go retake them. We have never used any money from this fund. We have never had to go retake anybody so far. So another budget year to hello, Eric Spoonmore.
He's very proud. Comments, questions?
Could you just do that with all the files? Just, just leave it, just don't spend it. That works.
All right, well, seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, by my record, that concludes you all.
That's it. Thank you.
Can I say one thing before I leave? This has got to do with the conversation that we had on Tuesday. I've got some numbers for you. With level six felonies, there are nobody, there is nobody in the Monroe County Jail being held on one level six felony. They may be there on level six felonies and a level five. They could be there on a level six, a couple of level sixes. There are 10 right now in the jail serving time. One of them was sentenced by one of the judges. The other nine are probation violations. And when I tell you that they're there on probation violations, it's because there were multiple probation violations. And they are, so there are 10 of those. Of all of those, however, the sentences were 180 days or less. There was nobody sentenced there to more than 180 days. And remember that with level sixes, you get day-for-day credit time. So for every day you serve, you get two days towards a sentence. So when we're talking about programming, when we're talking about treatment, they will be, especially the PTRs, they will be looked at, if possible, to be going into some other kind of treatment when they're released. But there is nobody there on a level six that is there for longer than 180 days at this time. The other thing, however, that I think is significant that I wanted to bring to your attention, is there are 17 inmates waiting to go to the Department of Correction. There is an inmate that has been waiting to go to the Department of Correction since June. Now, that is up to the Department of Correction. The Department of Correction only accepts people on certain days and according to their schedule. You cannot take them to the Department of Correction and just drop them off. So again, I thought that was significant enough to bring to you. So when you talk about sentencing a level six to the DOC, even if we were to do that, if it took them June, July, August, September, four months to come and get somebody, by the time they came and got somebody, they wouldn't have any time to be doing much of anything. Anywho, they might have a little bit. But I did want to, I did want to let you know that as you're looking at jail numbers and looking at what jail numbers mean, but we did look to see about the level sixes. And because of pre-trial release, to see a level six in jail just because they're still there after an initial hearing for more than a couple of days or so would, we cannot imagine happening. Not, not with pre-trial release, not with one level six. It could be multiple level sixes. And Council, Councilmember Hawk is right. There are people in that jail that have been gotten there, released, gotten there, released. And I will admit this to you. Under the pre-trial release committee policies that we enacted when we began pre-trial, we have a policy that if you have three or more pending cases and you come on the third, we will hold you on the other two. If you commit another violent crime, we will hold you. And typically, we will do that. But I will admit to you, there are people who have probably five or six pending cases for criminal trespass that's relatively minor or whatever, and we have them, and we, and we let them go again until we say, finally, all right, we got to get these resolved. But I just wanted to make you aware of that, because it was something that came up in while you're looking at numbers. But we did look at the number of DOC, people waiting for the DOC, because they've been committed. But again, that's all, but it is, again, it's not something that we can force the Department of Corrections to do. The sheriff cannot do that. It's what the Department of Corrections does. And the last thing I'm going to say with a smile on my face is, Field of Dreams is my, one of my favorite movies. And I will say this to you, if you build it, whatever number you build, we will not fill it, because you have built it. It would be unethical for us to do that. We do not sentence people based upon if there is room in the jail, We do not sentence people based upon if there is room in the jail, if there is not room in the jail. Is there room in the jail? Then great, we'll put more people in the jail. We can't do that. We look at what it is and what this appropriate sentence is and what happens. Where they go after that, they are, once they are remanded to the custody, they are remanded to the custody of the sheriff and it becomes the sheriff's responsibility. Now, we all live in this community, we all talk together in this community, we work together in this community. And as I said on Tuesday, we in this community truly believe in, in rehabilitation, in services, in treatment, in trying to help people be their, be their better selves. So, but, you know, you're, like, you're not going to make me be able to watch Field of Dreams again in the same way. But, in all seriousness, just because there are beds, right now, there are, we are under, we are under the capacity of that jail. We have been under the capacity of that jail for quite a while. So, because we know there's availability, doesn't mean we're going to go, oh yay, let's just start putting people in the jail. Not going to do that. We ethically cannot do that. So.
Thank you.
I, but I thought, since you're looking at numbers, you might want to know that we looked at the numbers. So.
Yeah. Thank you.
We can help you in another way, let me know, because we can certainly look at our numbers.
I really appreciate that because I felt like that you had promised to bring that to us. And I've heard from others that, well, level six, not much of whatever. Well, let me tell you what, if you have someone who comes on your property and trespasses on your property and you're frightened, you don't think it's a little thing. And I have several friends who have ended up leaving their business from downtown because the criminal trespass. That's not a little thing.
And I'm not saying it is. I'm not saying, what I am, what I am saying is-
Whatever, to indicate that this is not important to the public because it is. We hear that all the time. And so, whatever we need to do to try to, to make the streets safer, the community feel safer and, and welcome visitors here as well, I think that's something we all have a stake in.
Oh, we do. And I'm not saying that we're treating criminal trespass as a minor problem. What I am saying is, is depending upon where the trespass is, the mental state of the person, what we can do with the person, we look with all that as well. But yes, do we recognize that that is a significant problem in this community? Yes, we recognize that as well. And we're also looking at solutions to try to, and we're, we all sit on committees to try to address what that is and to see what we can do as a community to help with that because it is an issue.
Thank you very much, Judge, and thanks to all of you.
Thank you very much.
This is very instructive, always. Counsel, we're going to go to recess for 10 minutes and then come back together to take our last two items on this agenda for the evening. Together for the sixth budget session here, we're at item 11. And that is a, the legal department. And, and this is the memo Counselor Hawke referenced this earlier. And Ms. Turner King, I think, is going to elaborate just a little bit on it regarding our ongoing FLSA issues. And so, I'll turn it over to Ms. Turner King.
I'm gonna share the PowerPoint that I think you've seen before. Hold on, that's not what I wanted to share. Okay, so this PowerPoint should not come as a surprise because it's the identical to the one that you seen in July.
Hey.
Um, so, it kind of briefly recaps that the, um, there's going to be changes to the Federal Labor Standard Act for exempt employees. FLSA establishes the overtime rate of 1.5 times an employee's regular rate for hours beyond 40 hours work week, but exempt employees, um, aren't held to those regulations. So, this kind of determines what is a non-exempt and exempt employee. And I'm rushing through this because you heard it in July, but if you want me to slow down, please tell me to. Um, the main, it's, this slide explains that an exempt employee is determined by a salaries test and a duties test, but here's the more important bit. Okay. So, currently, or not currently, prior to July, the minimum for exempt employee was at 35,568. So, July 1st, it went up to 43,888. And as of January 1st, it's going to go up to 58,656. Then it will increase every, I think it's two or three years thereafter. So, that leaves counsel with this choice of what to do. And, um, you have a couple of options. You can make employees who are exempt, non-exempt. Remember, you can't go vice versa so that you can't make non-exempt employees exempt, but that is one option. So, what I did was I went through with the help of Employee Services and Council Office and identified all of the salaries that I believe are of exempt employees who are below the minimum for January. And when I looked at these positions, I looked at the base rate, not if someone was at a three-year level or an eight-year level, because if someone who's at a three-year level leaves tomorrow, then we're going to have to deal with this problem throughout the year. And it just made sense to deal with it all now. So, what we determined is that I think there's about 20 positions, which are actually displayed on a very tiny graph on the screen. I don't know, I don't know that helped, but we'll see. So, the first one is the internal auditor. This position is at a PAT B in 40 hours. So, in the third column in this chart, I identified potential options for counsel to consider. So, one option would be to reevaluate the job description for this position. However, we just did that. Um, the other option would be to make this person non-exempt, which in speaking to the auditor, I don't think there's too many concerns on her end for that to happen. And then the third option is to tie this position, or to make this position an SO and tie it to a PAT D. I will remind you that WIS greatly frowns upon doing that very thing. Um, the next one is the family court coordinator. It's a 35 hour. Even if you move this position to 40 hours at the current salary, it would not meet the FLSA minimum. So, you can look at making that position non-exempt. In speaking to the courts, I don't think there's too much concern about that. The other option is to reevaluate that job description because there's some history as to why that person is exempt, which is long before Molly came to the council office. So, you'll have to ask him.
You want me to, you want me to elaborate?
Well, it is, yeah. It's relevant.
So, I'm sorry. Sorry. Caught me with my mouth full. So, what happened, this particular position, when it went through that, the countywide evaluation, was written to include, and what is the, the degree that you hold?
Juris doctorate.
Juris doctorate. Which is for the attorney. That, um, counsel, which would mean that when the evaluation came back with the job description, that made that position an EXE. And, um, after discussing with, with the courts in this, that position does not require that attorney position or that attorney degree. So, rather than, um, going back and having WIS redo it, we just kept the current job description and moved forward with it. So, it has not technically been reevaluated without that degree. So, I would suggest that it goes back to WIS, be evaluated, um, and see where it comes back at.
I, I remember that.
My recommendation. The family, the family court coordinator.
And they, the current PAT C classification includes a requirement that the person has a JD?
No. No, when WIS brought, we, we just kept the old job description that was done prior to the 2020 value, 2021 evaluation.
And so, there's an individual in this position who holds a JD? And that's the issue? I mean, I'm confused as to why we-
But the problem is, you don't pay someone for the amount of education or degree that they have unless it is needed for the job. You see? I mean-
Right. I mean, I think, you know.
I think what the history illustrates is that maybe this job hasn't been reevaluated in some time and it might be a good stepping stone as a first step to, uh, have WIS to sit down, look at this job description, make sure it encompasses what this person does and that it's classified appropriately.
Completely agree. I mean, that, yeah, if it didn't go through any kind of scrutiny at the la, during the, the overall WIS reclassification project.
Yeah, and I, I will also say that we looked at the amount of comp time hours or flex time, or how many hours this person's working over 80 hours. And I think in a year's time, Employee Services said we're like at 12. And so, if this was a non-exempt position, I don't know that it would be that big of a fiscal impact. The next two positions are in the Health Department. They're both PAT Ds and they're both managers. These two positions could be fixed to meet the FLSA minimum by moving them to 40 hours because PAT D, 40 hour hourly salary meets that minimum. You could look at making them non-exempt. And all of them will say, you can make this an SO position, but that's probably the worst idea according to WIS. The next series of positions in this memo is, um, in the probation department. And these are the Adult Probation Director, the CASP Director. All of the positions in probation impacted by this are director or supervisory positions. So, I've spoke to the courts and Ms. Brady. And one potential solution that easily fixes these probation positions is to require a minimum of three years of experience. They're all supervisory positions. They already had three years of experience. So, this would, like, everyone currently in the position meets that requirement. And then tying that position to a three-year level probation salary will meet the FLSA minimum.
Thank you, Linda Brady. So, no change to anybody currently employed in any of those.
I think it is above a three-year experience level.
Yes.
But as a director, one would expect.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, you would change the job description?
Correct. And because, and that's not a change that would need to go to WIS. So, we could change the job descri, uh, descriptions that would guarantee a minimum of a three-year probation salary, which is above that FLSA minimum.
You're lucky with this.
As long as someone didn't come forward and say, oh, now we have this chance of getting someone, they don't have three years' experience, but let's go ahead and do it.
Have you heard that before?
What? That never happens.
Oh, it happens all the time.
What's the next one?
Oh, so, the next, the next, um, one is the executive assistant in the Public Defender's Office. And I'm going to kind, so, the option is see if that job description needs reclassified or make that position non-exempt. I have talked about neither option with the Public Defender's Office. I know the person holding that position has expressed multiple times that she would like to look at her job description, but it didn't come from Mr. Hunt. So, that's a conversation I think you, we need to have with the Public Defender's Office to see if, you know, they have concerns with moving that position to non-exempt or if we need to look at alternative solutions. The next one is of the list, the ones that I was most surprised by. So, the Director of Veteran Affairs is a PAT B. And so, I've spoken to Mr. Miller. He has got job descriptions from other counties and he's going to update his job description because he said there were duties that, um, he was already performing that weren't accurately reflected in there. So, we're going to work on his job description, but it would have to get to a PAT D level to meet that minimum. Um, you can make it non-exempt, but I will mind, remind you that one thing that the Veterans Affairs Office is really good about is they attend a lot of after-hour events. So, if he has to start flexing his time, it, it's going to lead to potential closures during the day in the office, which no one wants. So, if any of the ones on this makes sense to make it an SO, I think it's probably that one. But I'd like to look at the job description first. If that is, that's my recommendation, if that's what you would like to do. Um-
And he's already getting other job descriptions from around the state.
I mean, even bes, beyond looking at it from an FLSA purpose, I think it makes sense to look at his job description because it doesn't reflect what he's doing.
A PAT B, that's so weird.
Were we, did, did we look at it during the WIS study?
Yes, we did. And, and, um, at the time, there was a different person in there. I don't believe they were doing as many of the events or duties that is currently because, um, Mr. Miller has stated that he is doing things that's not even reflected in the job description.
Okay.
So, I, I believe we are working with Mr. Miller to update that, to go through the PAC process.
So, the next series of positions are all at YSB. They're at 40 hours. Um, you could make these positions non-exempt. There's some concern about that because they frequently cover when YSB has vacancies and looks, so like, that residential specialist positions, um, rather frequently vacant and other positions cover it. So, they might occur a lot of non-exempt hours, but I haven't really looked at that on it yet. Um, at the risk of Michelle throwing something at me, you could create a YSB-specific grid. That somewhat makes sense because YSB is unique in the sense that it's a 24/7 facility and the only other 24/7 facility that we do have is the jail and it has its own grid. Um, and having its own grid might cure some issues that are unique to YSB.
They've come to PAC quite a bit.
Uh, they do. Um, you, I to an SO, but this is where I will say, some of the problems on this list, majority of the problems on this list that are positions of a PAT C at 40 hours, um, salaries would meet the FLSA minimum with the 4% COLA. So, if you did a 4% COLA across the grid, rest of these problems go away mainly.
Well, that's not true. Not all of them.
Not all of them, but it leaves two.
Two.
Believe the Director and the Internal Auditor.
That is-
It, it's just one possibility.
Just an awfully expensive cure for relatively small.
Right. This, this is, yeah, a solution, trying to find a problem.
It was a real problem, but I'm, yeah. It's, it's, it's a very expensive cure when a less expensive cure is-
I mean, with the states saying 3%, are we going to say 4% because we've got some people we don't know what to do with? Whatever.
So, I have a question.
Yes, go for it, Katie. We're informal at this point.
Okay. It seemed that way, but then I realized, I don't know.
I, I started my interrupting.
According to the memo part right before that, um, chart, which, thank you for the table, that lays things out really clearly. So, first of all, thank you. That, that helps immensely. You highlighted the 4% COLA solution and that the PAT- And that the PATC positions at 40 hours would meet that. And.
So that's all of YSB, the Public Defender. It'll leave the Director position in Veterans. All of your probation officer positions are going to be remedied by adding that. To their job description.
Yeah, I. I kind of agree with the whole, that's an expensive solution.
Yeah. I just threw it out as one solution and slew of others offered.
Oh. Clearly, I get it. Yeah.
The deadline is January 1st of 2025 to resolve these issues. Does resolution include PAC is working on it? Or does resolution?
January 1st, the salaries have to be at the FLSA minimum if they're exempt employees.
We have, so if we're gonna go down like the PAC route where we're reevaluating job descriptions. We have three more meetings.
Correct.
We would have to work very expeditiously.
Be like the probation change won't need to go to WIS. Counsel can do that. Have to, if, if you move the Health Department to 40 hours, that wouldn't require WIS action. So I mean, I guess it depends on how much, which path you take on each position as to how quickly it can be remedied. WIS path will take longer.
So you're saying that we need to have this be part of our adopted salary ordinance?
Yes, yes.
Ready to be paid on January 1st.
Yep. Yes.
This is in the mix of all those things. Yeah, and Counselor McKim.
So the, the exempt versus non-exempt, refresh my memory. Is that something, that's something the council can just do?
You can move an exempt employee to non-exempt because it's conferring a benefit. You cannot move a non-exempt employee to exempt because it's the removal of the benefit.
Okay, so but those first two positions.
You can make them non-exempt.
And we, but to clarify, without WIS.
Without.
Like we can just magically say, is what you're, I just wanna make sure, because I think that was your point too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would have to defer to Ms. Shell if that would be something that would get sent to WIS.
I, anytime we make any changes to WIS, you know, to the job descriptions, I send it to them. So.
You don't have to.
But, no, just as an FYI, not for, you know, so that way they have it on the record.
But I sent to, I meant pay them to look at it and weigh in or.
It wouldn't be a request for review. It would be more of a for their knowledge.
Yes.
Got it. I, oh, go ahead.
Do we pay them to receive a change?
Okay. Well, I don't care what all you say now. Sounds right. Charge us.
But I do want to remind everybody, the sending it to them is a cree, cree. Key component of what Margie Rice sort of said back when we went through that because they went in and looked. And they had like 1986 this, 1992 this, and, and the name Monroe wrong. So it's.
Anytime, and I say we, the council updates, approves job descriptions. And then there's changes made. I forward it back to WIS for their database to have on file, so they know what we've done.
Yes.
So.
Yeah. Go ahead, Counselor McKim, I think it was.
And that's really good, but we're also supposed to be keeping track of it just in case, you know, WIS goes.
Yep, we did.
Wherever.
We're doing that here.
Because not that long ago, nobody could find the job descriptions. It's like, oh, we've lost them. So we can't ever let that happen.
So, so it seems to me that, that, oh, it just disappeared.
I took it down. I put it back up.
That you had, had pretty easy and good solution for everything other than the Family Court Coordinator and the Veterans Affairs Director. Is that, is that right?
And those YSB positions, I, I don't know whether the. Between creating a new grid or making them non-exempt, between that, those two, I don't know which is the better path.
The grid seems like it makes more sense given the 24-hour nature.
And I did ask Employee Services, which I know they're working on, to kind of run some reports to reflect how many hours. Uh, over the 80-hour work week, these positions are working to kind of give us an idea of if they were non-exempt. How many comp time hours they'd be incurring.
I get the feeling Kim doesn't like the idea of another grid.
She does not.
Don't, but I do, you know, that's okay.
Yeah. And has anyone talked to YSB about any of this?
Not talked to YSB, but I have talked to the judge about this.
Okay. Have you talked to the department head for all of these positions?
I've talked to. Mr. Miller and the Commissioner's Office. I've not spoke to the PD's Department yet. And then I spoke to Bree. So yes, but all but one.
Okay.
Most of these positions are in the courts. Well, I, I don't know that we've talked to the Health Board. I forgot about the Health Department on there.
Did you speak with Ms. Kelly?
I will speak with Dr. Pritchard and the Health Board, because that would be their, a decision within their purview.
Uh, yeah, but a heads up to the department heads also. I'm, I'm more looking at it like that. I mean, it's. Yeah. Um, and I agree with Counselor McKim that. To me anyway, because I was just kind of going through and marking this up, there seems to be a clear winner for several of these. That we might be even be able to ma- make progress on this evening. So I'm gonna outline what I see for each one and without making a motion in case there's. I'm, I'm not there yet.
Well, well, because we're not, I mean, we haven't even done the salary ordinance yet for, for 2025. So we're just providing input at this point to the.
Yes, no, I, I think my goal tonight was to refresh your memory, identify the positions. And then see if you needed anything additional that would be beneficial in deciding which path to take for each position.
Well, I think we need to move on a couple of these issues if there were, if they actually do involve having WIS review something.
And the effective budget, so.
Yes, and so, um, the one. Miller, I have an appointment set with him on the 27th to work through his job description. Uh, and I think I, I can speak to the courts about the Family Court Coordinator. That's the only two that I think would be beneficial to go back to WIS. The Internal Auditor just went to WIS and had changes made and it still came back as a PATB. So out of all of them, I think you're looking at two potential WIS reviews.
Okay, so you don't need a motion to move forward on any of these things?
I don't think so, because at this point I'm just information gathering and was gonna circle back.
If we're gonna approve a budget, we need to have the, the 40 hours over 35 reflected in that budget. So I don't know, like, why we would wait to, I mean, we could say effective on January 1st in our new budget, but.
I'm happy to call Lori and Dr. Pritchard and talk with them. I, I think they were, I mean, I can try tomorrow.
Okay, so I think though we should say. I mean, we need to agree that that's what we want to do for those positions, right?
Let, let me ask.
At the time we pass the salary ordinance, yeah.
Yeah.
Which means tonight would be a good time to say, hey, go forth, talk with the Health Board and Lori. And let them know that what we want to do as a council is this, we suggest this in order to solve this problem. Does that make sense?
I might throw it a different way.
Okay.
Is there anyone that objects to anything that you've heard so far from sort of this way of dealing with each of these positions?
Absolutely.
Is there anyone who wants to offer any more additional input on these positions? Yes, Counselor Munson?
I, um, I noticed for YSB that each of the positions was PATC. So that doesn't look like a really complicated grid because.
No, it's just, it's just having another grid that I gotta worry about. But yeah, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
But my, my question is, am I only going to create a grid? A standalone grid for these one, two, three, four, five positions? Or do I do the entire YSB?
It has to be the entire YSB.
And that's the way I'm thinking it, so.
So on that one then.
So, but not everybody at YSB has, has these additional hours in this, these.
But are we gonna treat, but this handful of people different than we're gonna treat?
Yeah, okay.
You know, everybody else in, within that department, so.
I think. Creating a grid too. I mean, there's gotta be a change. In, in the, what you're compensating them. So yes, they're not just copying and pasting a grid over.
No, I think the grid in essence would have the FLSA minimum being the starting salary for PATC. Yeah, the person coming in with no experience, so like the first.
Create it like we do the jail?
Yeah.
Yeah. Wait, yeah. I mean, we would, I would just have to figure out something.
So in effect, we would be impacting the salaries of more positions than just this. This is where I start to get very concerned. Um, go ahead. I'm sorry, I'm done with it.
No, okay, yeah, I'm, I'm. I guess I've reversed the way I was thinking about, about that. I, I think. We, we need to look at what Employee Services says about the number of, of hours over. And making non-exempt is probably the, the best option. And if it only occasionally is an issue, then it's occasionally an issue.
Got Peter's hand down here.
And the next PAC meeting is October 1st. So whatever additions we need to make to that agenda, please do so, so that we can act on it expeditiously.
Well, is there anything that's waiting on PAC?
Pardon?
Or is there anything that would be waiting on?
If there's changes to like, for example, Mr. Miller's job description, it would come to PAC. And so that's why we've scheduled meetings before the October 1st deadline to try to see if we can get something before.
And, and depending on the courts, we might, we might be able to get that one back. Because I know that I had talked to her, and I'm talking Lisa Abraham, uh, you know, about making some changes. So I don't know if she's already on that or not, so. But we might be able to get those together by October 1st.
And that's, that's kind of why I'm a little anxious about, we gotta make a decision at least for each one of these. What the next step is and give, give them some guidance. I think. Expressing a lot of anxiety, meetings this week.
Yeah, more, more so than I think that it is needed on, on this particular issue. I mean, I think it sounds like there are really only two complicated situations that need to be resolved. And they've, they've already got some thoughts on that. Um, we're not, we're not considering the salary ordinance tonight. Um, so a lot of these changing to non-exempt would need to be included on the salary ordinance when we actually do vote on it.
And I mean, as a reminder, you can make budget change all the way up to adoption. So I'm going to work with Employee Services to try to get those reports as quickly as we can. I think it helps that if I can now narrow this list down more, which I can, because I can remove the probation officers. And so I think I could bring information back more than likely by your next meeting.
And we can also make salary ordinance changes up until whatever. We're always amending. So whatever you adopt, I mean, we can still make salary ordinance changes afterwards. We just need to make sure it's in place before we start the new budget.
I've got Counselor Hawk.
Right. And I thank you for the information you sent out saying this is what would be if we, you know, did what the state is doing. 3% and I don't know whether everybody else has looked at. Did you just do that today? When did I look at?
I did it a couple of meetings ago.
Whatever. So I don't know that we've had time to take a look at that, but I don't think we're rolling around in extra money. We don't know what to do. So I was thinking, you know, if we, if we do say 3%, then we're not gonna be arguing back and forth with probation. Because we're all gonna be on the same page. Let's say if they, if they get three and we say to the employees, we're gonna give you four, then does that mean we're gonna give probation another 1%? And then, or what if probation gets three and we can only give two to the rest of the employees? You see what mess you can get into. So I mean, we just happen to be pretty easy to say three, so that we're all being treated the same. Of course, I know the treasurer would like for us to say four. I don't like.
We do have COLA next, two, two items down on this list. So I, I would encourage counselors to be thinking about that and we can maybe articulate some of that, uh, tonight. What some thoughts are.
Sorry, so we, we were gonna talk about that later, because I thought we were just like saying, okay, we're going home.
No, 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 we're, we're still on FLSA, FLSA. I can't say it.
Do have one question on that then.
Yeah, what, what, what questions remain on that? I mean, I, I'm, I have to admit, I'm starting to get lost in the details here. Yes.
Okay, so. We have a public hearing on the 8th regarding budgets.
Yes.
You can still make changes, recommendations or anything. We know, I think we have a good idea of what we need to do. I don't know. Do you, do you feel that way, Molly? And so we can come back with an update. You know, that gives her time to talk to some other departments. I can see if we can get, you know, some more of the WIS stuff going and that kind of thing. So we can give you an update on, okay, this is what we absolutely have to do. And then, you know, on the 8th, if that helps.
Yes. Is there anything glaringly other than COLA on, related to this? That is of question for you all from us?
I, I think other than getting some report from Employee Services that will show if these positions are made non-exempt. What the average amount of hours they would be incurring is. Is there anything else counsel would like to see for these positions that would help counsel make a decision one way or the other?
I think one thing I'm hearing people say is. An approximate estimated fiscal impact of the change, because the budget's down to the, the meanderings. What else, counselors?
Hours of overtime that we talked, hours and overtime.
Okay.
Okay, regarding, I guess. Are, are you looking like across all of the positions, looking for that information or just? I mean, obviously you said we're taking out the probation ones.
Yeah, I think once we take out the probation ones, that I, I was just gonna focus on those. And like for some of them, my first step is to go talk to the Health Department and see if we could just, if they're be amendable to moving to 40 hours.
Okay.
And then I guess I could try to do a fiscal impact to show the difference between the 40 hours versus non-exempt, if that's what you want me to do.
I, I don't, I don't know that, do we need that?
Well, I, I thought I heard that a little bit from folks, that they were worried about the, the, the dollars, but Counselor McKim.
I mean, for health, no. I mean, for me, for health, I would like them to be 40. I think a lot of us would like them to be 40. The question is, is the Health Board gonna bulk it at making them 40?
Yeah, there's some pressure the other side on that one.
So for the Family Court. That would be one to review for exempt. You already did that in terms of the overtime analysis, so.
That's also one, we wanted to look at the job description, because it hasn't gone to WIS in a very long time.
Okay.
That would have, would have a dual kind of thing.
So it's not necessarily a fiscal impact for every single thing is the next step, I guess is my point. And. And I think you have the analysis for like the Internal Auditor and some of these other ones. I guess to me, it's like, it's not as easy as a blanket. There is a, a best, best solution for each thing. And by solution, I get, I still mean next step. We don't, it doesn't necessarily, necessarily know. But I don't really wanna be. Voting on a budget when I don't know what we're paying. I mean, I guess we can just put 58,656 in it for everybody. But it would be good to have a more.
Then that means it is a fiscal impact question.
No, I mean, make a decision and get it into the budgets of our departments for next year. So that what we're approving is already in there. It just makes sense as we're thinking about all these other things.
Well, let me ask it a different way. Is the. Okay, how much, how much possible variance in the budget for any of the, the budgets that. For want of a better word, I'll say matter, because you know what I mean?
Yeah.
What, what is the variance and will that tonight affect your consideration of a raise? Like, would you, would the? Um, what, what is the variance and will that tonight affect your consideration of a raise? Like, would you, would the, if the 40 hours of, or the additional 10 hours of health department cause you to give employees a different cola? To me, it's, it's a very small, we're talking about very small amounts of money. The, you know, probably the biggest, the biggest deals are the, the veteran services and the family courts coordinator, because those are in general fund. And there's the most mystery associated with them.
See your point. Um, and it's not going to change my discussion points tonight. Are we deciding a cola tonight?
I think that us talking about a cola, having a, a little bit of a discussion around what maybe inclinations are, would help our staff who have been lobbying me since February on this question.
We'll start again.
They will. And I've already warned others who may sit in this seat to get ready in about two minutes. But yeah, I, I think they want to hear that. And I think that on their side, that's the work product that is the hardest to navigate. Because it's gotten so much different than, you know, back in the day where I guess it was a ledger. This is now multiple systems, multiple hours. And then we end up always having some mistake at the last second.
Yep.
And of course, that's just no fault of anyone's own. And then of course, the state says if you are 12 seconds over, you will have the tax rate of Owen County. And, and, uh, we, we got our boys out. Not to all them albums.
Are you still on FLSA or have we moved on to code? What are we talking?
Run FLSA.
Are we still on?
I was going to say about FLSA was when we were going through some of the training on that, they had made it clear that, that even though it suggested like three years from now, they may have another bump up. That, that could be changed. They changed the last time they tried to do this. So we have to not be making changes because of what's going to happen three years from now. You know, we may all be blowing to bits three years from now. Um, but the other thing having to do with getting things ready for staff is we've got all these different positions and different changes that came from WIS and whatever. And we need to take that in consideration too. Just I say that before I go home.
Anything else, else on FLSA? So it sounds like we've got follow-up items and other considerations to do. Item 12 on our agenda is final budget discussions. And this is an opportunity for us to bring back any budget that counselors want to look at, see, vet, discuss, um, et cetera. Is there any budget that counselors would like to reopen? Yeah, Counselor Hawk.
Get this looked at, but.
I can't hear you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Bring it a little.
Trying to get out of here. Okay. When I was looking at, when it was being discussed early on in the commissioner's budget, there was us, the health net in there. And I'm trying to remember, but what I'm, I believe that that health net, health net is covered by federal government, state government or whatever, and really local dollars. It's not necessary for them to have now. Am I remembering that right? Because it's not like, it's not like local budgeting.
Say that one more time slow.
Like we got, no, I mean, I think.
How much was that? But well.
Two fifty. Um, it's two fifty. We temporarily lowered it to one fifty last year because we didn't really know what they were doing.
Well, I thought it was that, that their revenue is coming from a totally different place than what, what was it called before?
Oh, volunteers in medicine.
And so their revenue was coming from a major source, not a local source, but I may be wrong on that.
What Medicaid reimbursements, right? Isn't that primarily what they're?
Yeah. So.
Well, it's, it's part of a bigger entity. I don't know. There might be other things that that parent company does. I mean, yeah, I don't know.
They can build private.
I don't know. And I didn't even remember how much it was. I just, I was going to put that out there for trying to find a little bit of a raise for people. If that was $250, $250,000 would that help? But I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. I just thought if they don't, if some group doesn't need our money, then I bet we can find, find people who do need it.
So what, one item we had, Kim, you had something in general, or pardon me, in, in the general fund for emergency management that you wanted to bring up.
Yes, during, during the discussion with emergency management, um, and I can't remember. I'm going to pull that budget up real quick and share it with you. When, uh, when Jamie was in here, she talked about how this line right here is called, um, emergency management heavy equipment services. And that she would like to see a different line, um, so that it's not, uh, so narrow with regards to, it can only be used for, you know, heavy equipment services. So I had, I did an email exchange with Counselor Iverson and with, with Jamie. And we have come up with a solution to add an account line. And I didn't put that on here. Um, can you look up, go to loud? Sorry. But if we add the account line and it, it is just called, um, emergency management. I think it's, um, disaster recovery or response or something to that effect. And then you would need to, um, reduce line 35051 and 35052 and put that combination into this new account line.
With disaster, EM disaster response.
Well, what, what difference does that, does that make any difference in the budget?
That's what we had talked about it, at, you know, during the meeting that she wanted to create just one line to have everything in.
But I mean, that doesn't change the.
It doesn't change. Yeah, it's not going to change the bottom line. So I just needed to let you know I was going to move forward with that if that was okay with you guys.
Yeah. Cheryl, did you have something you want to?
So I had talked to her, but I, nobody contacted me about this.
Well, during the meeting, Counselor Iverson said that she, that he would reach out and work with me and Jamie about that.
I'm sorry, Cheryl.
Okay, that's okay. I just had talked to her and didn't understand what was going on. And I do have a point to make, and that is if you use the term disaster, then you better be dealing with disasters. And I'm not sure you want it to be, uh, something as technical as a disaster in the naming of what the funds are to go for.
That's an interesting point.
And then I think that's a really valid point. And, and I think to, to Mr. McKim's point, I, we can name these lines whenever we want.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have very much substantive impact on whether or not we're going to pass a decent budget or not. But I, I, I take your point very, it's a good point.
Yes, Counselor McKim.
Can we move on to a discussion of cola and nitpick later?
Okay.
Um, I mean, it's, sorry, I don't, I just.
Talk about cola. Can we pull that up and take a look?
Okay. So yeah, this is the report that I sent everyone. This does include all of the changes that we've done with regards to adding personnel or removing personnel. So this does reflect all of those changes throughout all of the budgets and the bottom line is.
Even tonight? Not tonight, though.
Pardon? Does not include tonight's changes.
Okay.
But if anything.
He's not a magician.
Yeah, I'm not that quick. So, but. Also, with regards to cola, um, we've had departments with regards to salary grids have asked about adding additional step increases of 35, 40 and 45. And we just recently added the 20 and 25, um, with, you know, within the last couple of years. But so I don't know if that's something you guys want to look at as to how that would look on a grid and the costs.
I, I don't want to.
I think the discussion's on cola.
Okay.
I think other things are not that question. And I, I kind of, I would love to hear counselors maybe talk about cola, thoughts about cola to try to get that articulated.
So it was like.
Sure. No doubt. And I know I've been asked that too. There's a, there's a lot of things kind of not applying generally to everybody that have been asked for, for certain things that I, I'm not sure that we will quite get to this year.
So, um, so this is the charts. Um, and as you can see, the difference at the bottom, it says the cola proposals estimated increase. So the, the difference is from what you're looking at. So for column I, the pink is the difference between what the request and what the three percent will cost a million point three.
Can you go back up to the general, general fund? I think general fund and PS Lit are probably the two that are most salient to the decision.
Here's the general fund. This is how much a three percent cost to the general fund.
And it says nine thou, nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Got.
Percent.
And.
Counselor McKim.
I, I'm just, you know, I always like to just throw out what I think we should do here. I, I like to, 3.2%. I think we, we have used in the past. You know, we've tried to use as a bogey that, uh, the, the Midwest CPI December to December. Last year, we, you know, it was a very special case and I think we did exactly what we needed to. But I think it's a good idea if we get back on to that 3.2%. The difference isn't that much between three and 3.2%. 3.2 is either three or 3.2 are fair. The city's giving three, the state is giving three. The federal government's giving two. So, uh, I'm, I'm going to get less than y'all. But, um, the, uh, but I think 3.2 gets us back on track with the, the CPI measure we've used in the past.
Um, and then here, let's go down to, there's a public safety lit.
Public safety lit is actually the fund that I'm, I'm not, I mean, I wouldn't say concerned about in the sense that there's plenty of cash balance now for the budget we're passing, but next year's council may want to rebalance a little, uh, and of course then we may have a jail fund. It may, that may help with rebalancing that too. So there's, there are other options. But the general fund, we're pretty darn close to balanced without the cola.
So any other funds you would like to look at?
Pretty well about the cola.
Well, we were like 200 under and we've cut over a hundred thousand today.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, that's what I was going to show you, um.
4B.
Obviously.
Are you going to show us where we?
Yeah, let me.
Like a million too short and now all of a sudden we're not.
It's been sliding down.
I guess my question would be then pretty well balanced still would mean then we're a million two meet, yeah, in deficit if we budget for cola.
Yeah, on paper, but we always know we, we, we budget like that and we wind up with several more or more million dollars in cash than we had before.
In reversions.
So, um, Courtney and I went through, um, and this is the re, re total reduction. This is the total reduction amount that we've made over the six meetings with regards to, uh, general fund.
How did it get?
And then you increase the levy by rebalancing the election fund.
Right. And so then.
That's in here.
Up and down. Yeah.
Oh, um, we changed. Right here. There we go.
I see it now.
So, um, the new general fund amount as of tonight. Where did I write that down? Right here? Fifty-two? Okay. So here is the new general fund amount with the changes that we've made tonight. So that's where we're at now on the Form 4B draft.
I brought that line down even further.
And let me remember, mind everybody that that law, that, that, that fund balance also includes a hundred thousand dollars that we put in emergency management, just in case that we were just talking about. And $300,000 that we put in for juvenile detention, just in case. Um, so I mean, there's a lot of, I guess, a lot of squish in, in that budget, at least in a couple of hundred thousand dollars.
It always sounds much safer when you say it that way than it is.
But I mean, that, that, the squish is important because that means that we can handle a, a decent number of cola, a cost of living increase for staff. Now, the, the question I think before us is what level?
And then go back down to the, the bottom then, um, you know, so, I mean, yeah, that, that's the, that's the good question then. What is that operating balance become for each, if, if that amount of cola is added in, what is the operating balance for each of those, um, funds? And does it put any of them anywhere near what we would consider to be of concern?
See the auditor's hands over there.
Just wanted to know, I'm not sure if it was mentioned, but we have a, another just in case in the assessors contractual line in the general fund.
We had $50,000.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Thank you very much. So I, let me offer this to counselors. Here's what I have heard. If I were the staff trying to prepare this for us, I've heard a Counselor McKim has offered 3.2. Uh, that is an amount I've heard. I've not heard other counselors yell about that or counter that, but is that, is that an amount that you would want the staff to move forward in preparing?
There's a, there's a good basis for it. There's.
Good basis.
Predictable.
I am concerned that even what we just talked about, a, a 5.2 increase would be quite a bit. I, I'm, I'm very happy with that 3.2.
Wait, oh, you thought I was going the other way. No. Going rogue this week, folks.
Order more pizza. We're going to be in here a few more hours. I, 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 I will offer this. We'll say, and I, I say this again, everybody's tired of hearing this. As the son of a retired county employee, I know how much these conversations do matter and I would love to go as high as possible. However, we know that we have a, a good guiding metric with the CPI. We have done a lot in the recent years to keep up. I mean, to fill vacancies and to train and to keep up and, and beyond. And I'm pleased that we do that because I think there was a time that wasn't readily the first answer. And, and I'm not blaming anyone for it. I just had heard that firsthand. So I, I, to me, the 3.2 sounds like a achievable, doable on comparison with other entities. And of course, every year's a new year to keep looking to the future, but it, it gets us where we need to go. I think it does. Are there any other comments on that, counselors? Do, do, yes.
I was just going to say like, no, I, I.
It's picking you up.
Face. Yeah.
Not picking you up.
Think that's the universe way of telling me to shut up. Um, I'm going to go home. I'm glad I extended my part time because the city ain't getting more money. Um, okay. So. So, uh, the 3.2 I think is a really good, um, starting point. I think it's a base, good base point. I think we did a lot last year. I think the previous year was the, um, the bonuses that we did. Also, I remember.
Also, I remind council, it is the conversation of the benefits that got started in budget here and just a year ago, we can champion that. Um, so I, I think that we're on the up and up. And I do think that we are competitive with our salary in comparison to, um, what the city is offering. And I've heard them actually say that in their meetings. So, yeah, I, I think personally, it would make me more comfortable if we just stick with the 3.2 for now.
Go. Counselors.
Agree.
Final salary grid of the budget. Or at least as close as we're going to get at this point. Uh, Counselor?
Yeah, just, just as, you know, we always want to, uh, kind of remind everybody that thi- this is just preliminary and that there is, you know, there's more information that could come and more deliberations that, that, that could occur. And so, you know, don't, don't, nobody should be spending the extra money.
Don't spend it until you have it.
Yeah.
Here, I'm not sure which one of these is going. This early now on September 19th versus some of those previous years when we were in here with Christmas trees. Let's staff proof this thing to make sure there's something that we haven't forgotten. Like, well, we're not paying anything for HVAC at the just, this lets us do that and have time for it. And that's why we're doing this early, along with everything else we're doing this month.
Yeah, and I will send something out to the departments and work with them on trying to get numbers updated so we can at least get you a good, uh, total, you know, on, on what that's going to look like. So.
Counselor Hock?
Right. I, I just, uh, know there's been a lot of things that's, uh, apparently going to be going to WIS and I wish you all well, but I I can't right now think about, um, how much of that should have just one had come straight here. If WIS has already approved some of those positions, so we could have included those in those budgets. Because, you know, you're going to take it to PAC and PAC's going to say, just send it on to the council, whatever WIS said. And we could have already had that included in the budgets and.
I didn't get those back till this week, so.
Well, I'm, I know. I'm just saying we.
Yeah.
Yep, we're learning every.
Oh, we can consider it at the, at the hearing.
Yeah, I can, yeah. I mean, we're going to have a, um, a PAC meeting on the first. I can, we can have everything ready on, on the eighth at the public hearing.
And we can always, we can always, and I'll throw this out. One time we did a work session, had long-term finance and full counsel, and nobody died. PAC is all here right now and council's all here right now. We can always do about anything. And not let the process kill us.
Yep. Some of those WIS, uh, recommendations were for no change, right? They didn't all have.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seemed like several.
No change. And then there was some that there was change. And I just thought when we were all here together, just to have a meeting, have a meeting, to have a meeting, we could just boom and be done. Because there's other things people had to do on the first.
Are there anything else that you all need from us at this point? All right. Counselors, any comments that you have at this point? All right. I think we've said enough.
Good job, Mr. President.
Well, well, thank you, Mr. President. But no, you're, uh, thank you. We're going to go ahead and adjourn these hearings and we'll come back together for, uh, the budget hearings and adoption. Thank you.
We will be back.
Thank you.